So this is Al Diorio. I'd like to call this evening's meeting. This is August 5th of the Hopkinton Planning Board to Order. It is something just around 7 o'clock. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And I have the July 1st regular meeting and the July 15th special meeting minutes in front of us. We can take them individually or we can take them both together depending on the preferences of the board members. I'll entertain a motion.
Ron Perlwitz here. I'm sorry, two of us spoke at the same time.
That's fine. Right, Ron.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we treat them both together or rule on them both together and on approval of the minutes.
So I have a motion to approve. I have a motion and I have a second to approve both the July 1st regular meeting and the July 15th special meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Diorio, yes.
Ron, aye.
Eyes don't count.
Carolyn, aye.
Keith Lindelof, aye.
Emily, aye.
Everybody waiting? Okay, very good, thank you. Now, before we get down to the next item, we've had a change. And if the board members would allow me some latitude here. Down under, a little bit later in the agenda, under Advisory Opinion, there is an advisory opinion to the town council. My understanding is the attorney for the applicant who may be on the line is asking for a continuance in this matter. So to clear the deck a little bit, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda so as to move the advisory opinion to the first order of business and entertain the applicant's representative's request for a continuance. Board members, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to that effect? We need to formally amend the agenda.
This is Carolyn. I'd like to make a motion to formally amend the agenda and hear the representative for the zoning ordinance amendment first.
Very good, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Diorio, aye.
Perlwitz, aye.
Light, aye.
Lindelof, aye.
Shomshini, aye.
Okay, very good, thank you. Do we know if the attorney for this applicant is standing by?
He is. Please press *9, Mr. Brennan. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Joseph Brennan, attorney on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. You may begin.
Oh, thank you. First, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the opportunity to go ahead of the agenda. I actually have another matter for a meeting that starts at 7:00, then I'm a little later on the agenda. And with the timing of everything, sometimes it makes it very difficult, so I appreciate it. The application you have before is for a compassion center that we're looking to amend the zoning ordinance to allow the compassion center use in a manufacturing district. We put our application forward and the town council actually scheduled us for mid-September, mid to late September. So seen is how it gives us a little bit more of an ability to get everything together for our application. We're asking that you please continue this until the September 2nd meeting so that we can be closer in time as we provide our applications because that's a very large gap of almost 45 days if we were to do it otherwise. And when we present to the planning board, we want to have the most pertinent and up-to-date information available to us.
Okay, very good. So, planning board members, if you're so inclined, I would entertain a motion to accept the applicant's request and continue this to September, our meeting of September 2nd, if that's correct.
I'd like to make a motion that we agree to move this to September 2nd.
I have a motion.
Light, second.
I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Diorio, aye.
Perlwitz, aye.
Lindelof, aye.
Shomshini, aye.
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
I'm sorry. Carolyn, forgive me.
She seconded it, but she didn't vote in the roll call, but.
Carolyn, aye. Yes, aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Wanted to make sure you were counted.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so for the next item, under Old Business, this is an item for which I must recuse. This is for the Sarah Land Company project. My firm prepared the survey and mapping for the project, so I'm going to recuse. I'm going to ask Ron to take the reins at this point, and I'm handing my recusal notice to the clerk.
And I am accepting Al's recusal notice. I would just like to ask the representatives for this application to please press *9 so I can recognize that. Thank you.
Hi, I don't know if you heard me. This is Attorney Tia Priolo representing Joe Marone and Sarah Land Company. I am in my office and I have Mr. Marone with me in person for your questions. Before the board tonight is an application for a final plan to be accepted by the town on a three-lot subdivision located on Maple Court, is off High Street in Ashaway. The applicant was before this board for preliminary as the memorandum states in 2007. The project was put on hold for a while and resurrected last year. Since that time, my client has worked diligently and hand-in-hand with the town and has made modifications, has presented to you tonight a plan for a three-lot subdivision, taking into consideration the geography of the land, wells that neighbor the land, as well as drainage issues that were brought up. There were many meetings with the town, there were meetings of the peer review engineer from Crossman Engineering. I submit to you tonight that all concerns of the town have been met. The issues that were pertinent from the preliminary plans as offense by a neighbor, all neighbor issues have been abated and the neighbors are in agreement with my client. The solicitor has approved and the town has accepted a drainage easement that was recorded on this day in Book 582 at Page 481. Crossman Engineering has approved the as-built plan, which was submitted to the board on July 23rd, 2020. And the town Public Works Department has accepted the road as built by my client. And again, we seek a final approval of the subdivision today. And I am here and my client is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, any comments?
This is Carolyn Light. I don't have any comments or questions right now. I think it looks good.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Keith Lindelof speaking, same here. Thank you for the work and I think it's detailed pretty well.
This is Emily, I have no questions.
Okay, moving right along. I can see from the paperwork that has been submitted to the board, everything has been done, everything is up to par here. I think we're all in pretty good shape. Do we have a motion?
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. I'd just like to interject that I had this, on the second page of my memo, I have the findings that you need to make in your motion. And also, the board's going to need to set a maintenance bond in the amount of $17,500 as part of your motion to approve.
Thank you, Jim.
For the record, ladies and gentlemen, my client just told me that he was aware of that bond and he's already obtained that bond. Yes.
Okay. This is Keith Lindelof. I'll make a motion that the planning board approve the final plan, additional to the applicant posting a maintenance bond in the amount of $17,500 and upon seven positive findings. Number one, each subdivision shall be consistent with the requirements of the Hopkinton Comprehensive Community Plan or shall satisfactorily address where they may be inconsistent. Number two, each lot in the subdivision shall conform to the standard provisions of the Hopkinton zoning ordinance. Three, there will be no significant negative environmental impacts for the development as shown on the plan with all prior conditions of approval. Number four, the subdivision proposed will not recreate individual lots with such physical constraints to the development that on those lots according to pertinent regulations and building standards would not be impractical. Number five, all proposed land developments in all subdivision lots shall have adequate and permanent access to a public street. Number six, each subdivision shall provide safe pedestrian and vehicular traffic for surface water runoff control, coastal sites, and for preservation of natural, historical, or cultural features to the attractiveness of the community. Lastly, number seven, the design and location of streets, building lots, utilities, drainage improvements, and other improvements in each subdivision shall minimize flooding and soil erosion. Thank you, Keith. Do we have a second?
This is Carolyn, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and I will say that Ron Perlwitz votes aye.
Carolyn Light, aye.
Keith Lindelof, aye.
Shomshini, aye.
Okay, we have all positive answers for that.
Ron, it looks like there's a member of the public who would like to weigh in. Would you like to have them make a comment?
Oh, certainly, absolutely. I'm sorry, I might have moved a little too rapidly there.
All right, so I'm going to read off the last four digits, 2966. Please state your name for the record.
Robin Noory, 23 Maple Court.
Thank you.
My question is, during the course of your description, I heard the phrase draining easement. What property does that easement apply to?
Yes, this is Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. At the end of the cul-de-sac, there is a detention basin, and the easement area is around that, let's say.
So it's strictly the property that is to be developed as opposed to any abutting properties?
It's, the detention basin is in the open space area surrounding the whole lots.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. It looks like there's another person. Ron, would you like to entertain them?
Yes, thank you.
I'll read off the last four digits and please state your name for the record, 8222.
Hi, this is Joe Marone from Old People Road. Good evening to everyone. I just have, I just have one comment. I thought about this for a while, and I want to say it tonight. I want to thank the planning board, I want to thank Jim Lamphier and Talia for all their difficult work for these projects that they've heard, especially remote during the COVID. They're outstanding people, and sometimes they just get criticized, but I appreciate the work that everyone is doing on these remote calls, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. Thank you, Joe. Okay, that being said, let me pose this question to Jim. The vote that we took before, is that still valid or do we need another vote?
I think we're fine, Ron.
Ron, this is Sean Clough, the vote is fine.
Thank you, Sean.
I guess then at this point, I'll turn the meeting back over to Al, and we're good. Thank you, everyone.
Ron, thank you very much, I appreciate that, board members.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda. Approval of reforestation plan and setting of reforestation cash/cash/escrow bond, major land development, photovoltaic solar energy system AP4 lot 25, 310 Main Street, 310 Hopkinton Main Realty LLC, successor in interest to Maxon Hill LLC, and GD Hopkinton Main 1 LLC, successor in interest to Rhode Island Solar Renewable Energy 2 LLC, Care of Anthony Obicario. Applicant and/or their representative present?
I believe so. Please press *9 to be recognized.
Hey, this is Carolyn, I'd like to go on the record as recusing.
Oh, thank you, Carolyn.
Okay, I'd also like to make a general comment to some of our listeners and some of our active participants. I find it disappointing that information is constantly put in front of the planning board, the town council, the clerks, our attorneys, et cetera. I find it disappointing that the taxpayers' dollars are being used to vet information that has no value. I just wanted to point out to a few people out there, and they might know who they are, that when you intimidate or put false information or weak information in front of the officials of this community, you force us to put that information before our attorneys, and we all know that the taxpayers voted, that they don't have an appetite to pay unnecessary attorney fees. With that said, I'm recusing again on the Maxon Hill project, but this is food for thought for everything that goes on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Again, I would like to ask all of the representatives for this agenda item to please press *9.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, can you hear me? This is John Mancini, representing the applicant.
Yes.
And the owner with the property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're essentially continuing the hearing that we had at the last meeting, where we had a discussion in regards to two items. One was the restoration plan that had been submitted, along with comments from both our restoration forester, Crossman engineer, as well as a third party that had been engaged to review the two reports that have been prepared. The comments and the questions were that essentially the board wanted to see the restoration plan incorporate Crossman Engineering's comments, specifically 11 items, and also incorporate the cost analysis prepared by Crossman Engineering, which was the amount of $224,113. Sage Environmental had prepared a report submitted to the town on July 18th, 2020. We also have submitted the report from, well, essentially the reforestation plan, which incorporates the items requested, that was dated July 2nd, 2020, all of which has been submitted to the town and should be readily available for the board members. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we hope at this point that this is fully complete. We are acceptable for submitting a cash bond in the amount of $224,113, and request that the reforestation plan, as revised and submitted, would be acceptable.
Okay, very good, thank you for that recap. So, why don't we start here? Board members have seen this once before. There was at least one, perhaps more, board members seeking, we call it a consolidation of the data. I think that's been accomplished, but I'd like to hear from those board members to ensure that their concerns have been satisfied. So, I'm sure you know who you are. Go right ahead and speak up.
Hi, this is Emily. I'm one of those board members. I appreciate this consolidation. I'm looking at Page 2 of Sage's summary of what was accomplished here, and I commend them on the compilation of the information in these tables in a comparative way. It was very easy to see what they did, very transparent about how the revised budget was put together, and I concur with what they've put together. I think this is sufficient. Thanks for addressing our concerns.
Very good, Emily, thank you. Were there any other board members that had concerns or requests about the most recent request that we've made of the applicants, before I go to the public on this one?
I agree with Emily's comments. Thanks, Emily, for putting it out so loud. This is Keith.
I'd like to weigh in. I think Crossman has done an excellent job, and Sage has done a good job compiling all the information, and I find this quite acceptable. Thank you.
Any other board members? Jim, before I go to the public, anything on your end? Town Solicitor, anything from your end?
No.
Very good, thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard on this topic this evening?
There are.
And I see that there are, so I believe you can follow the instructions and you'll be allowed access.
I'm going to read the last four digits. Please state your name for the record, 2997.
Hi, it's Eric Bibler, Woodville Road.
Go ahead.
I don't have a problem with the reforestation plan, I just have a question, since this is perhaps the last time the applicant will be before the planning board. It's come to my attention that there's been a change to the final plan, that the transformers are being relocated to a different location, and I would like to have the developer just take a minute to explain that, developer and/or the town planner, so that the public's aware of what the change is.
Hello, technically, this isn't the reforestation plan. If the applicant is prepared to spend a moment or two on this topic, I'll allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't know what has changed, if anything, and I don't know why it would have changed. If something did change, that would be something that would be addressed with the planning department or the building department.
Okay, thank you. Jim, any feedback?
Well, I can say that the National Grid interconnection spot that was next to the Reynolds property, or nearest to the Reynolds property on Maxon Hill Road, was relocated to the, I want to say, north, northwestern corner of the site that's nearest Maxon Hill Road. It's quite a distance from Maxon Hill Road. You might be hard-pressed to see the new location. I have not seen the as-built conditions yet. I know that the applicant, the applicant themselves went to National Grid to this relocation. I think with all the people that I've talked to so far, everybody views this as a major improvement to the overall plan. It's not a major change, it would be a minor change to a plan, if anything, and in my view, it's certainly a betterment. And it should not, relocation of this should not impact any of the neighbors who are on the northern side there of Maxon Hill Road, so I think it's a pretty harmless change.
Okay, very good, Jim, thank you. Eric, does that address your concern or your question, anyway?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the change was, because I didn't, I had heard some informal discussions of it, and I just thought this was the appropriate time to get the story, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anyone else in the audience? I see no. Said, if there's no one else to weigh in on this particular topic, board members are willing to entertain, to approve the reforestation plan and the setting of the reforestation cash/escrow bond in the amount stated.
This is Ron, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve the reforestation plan and amount at $224,113.
I have a motion.
Keith Lindelof, second.
Several seconds, excellent. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Diorio, aye?
Perlwitz, aye.
Lindelof, aye.
Shomshini, aye.
I think that'll do it. Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you, members, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda. Development plan review, photovoltaic energy, I'm sorry, photovoltaic solar energy system, Frontier Road AP7 lots 62, 62A and 63, 15 Frontier Road, Revity Energy LLC applicant. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
I believe so. If you are going to be presenting, please press *9.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo from Revity.
Thank you.
Everybody on deck? Very good, so for this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Is Tom Moses, are you on, please?
They have to press *9.
So while people are queuing up, here's what I'd like to suggest, board members. There was lengthy discussion on this particular topic last time around. I'd like to just impose on Jim here for a few minutes to take us back to the bookmark where we left off. What I'm trying to accomplish here is, and I certainly don't want to abbreviate the applicant's privilege of providing additional information, but I'm reluctant to hear the same information over again. So if Jim could just kind of get us back on track as to where we left off, I think that would be the most efficient approach. So, again, if all the members are okay, Jim, quick recap.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. As you folks recall, we had a special meeting on this sole topic on July 15th, and at that meeting, a number of issues came to the forefront. One was decommissioning. The other was the adequacy of screening the project from Maxon Hill Road and Route 3. Another issue which was mentioned is the condition of the well and the necessity to keep a 200-foot protective radius around that public well. Another issue that came up was the screening of the fence, which is located on top of the berm, let's say, parallel with Maxon Hill Road. So those are the four topics, the main topics, that I felt as though we really didn't come to a resolution of. So what I did, in an effort to prepare for tonight's meeting... So, what I did, in an effort to prepare for tonight's meeting, I come up with a memo that I put in your packet that had 26 conditions of approval. And one condition that I attempted to move forward a little bit was the decommissioning, and that was condition number one. And then there was a whole host of other conditions, and most of the conditions that I put in the memo were basically a cut and paste from 310 Main Street. And I did so because I felt that some of those conditions would be applicable to this particular project, and it would certainly give the planning board the impression that a lot was thought about in regards to this project, and not just give you one condition or two conditions and then let you figure it out for yourselves, which you would have done anyway. But my hope was that this memo would save us a little bit of time and cut the taste. Now, I provided the memo that I did to the applicant in my solicitor's office, and as a result of that, the applicant came back with what I gave you today via email, okay? And I did that in an effort to expedite our discussion tonight. And you'll see that in red, it's a clean copy. Everything that's in red was added by the applicant, and so they have a total of 24, I believe, conditions. Two of the ones that I put in there, they deleted. One was the condition that no blasting would be allowed as part of the project, and the other condition that they omitted was the need to post a performance bond on the project to ensure that the project is constructed according to the plans that the board approves. So, I think it's appropriate. I discussed my memo in the applicant's memo with our solicitors. We went over each one of their conditions, and I would suggest to the board tonight that it's appropriate to start off with what we know is acceptable to the applicant in terms of conditions, and that should be the point of discussion going forth tonight. You know, look at those conditions, see if you want to amend them further, because keep in mind that it is the applicant, so you can feel free to amend any of those 24 that they put forth. And then also, too, let's revisit the screening of this project to make sure that the fence is properly screened, that the project is properly screened, and then let's talk about the well. So, if we focus on those items there, maybe we can get back and incorporate something else in as far as conditions go into a motion, and hopefully we can get this approved tonight and off our plate.
Very good, Jim. Thank you very much. So, planning board members, if you're in agreement with that general strategy, I might suggest we tackle the four topics that Jim has identified right out of the gate. That is decommissioning, screening, the well and the protective radius, and the fence, which we might lump in with screening. It would seem to me that once we clear those significant items off the deck, we could then return to the proposed conditions that Jim has set forth and just finesse those, if you will. What do you think about that idea?
Ron here. I agree that, I think that would be a prudent course of action. Let's get the tough ones out of the way first and then move on with the other ones.
Agreed.
Sounds good to me. On board, this is Carolyn.
Okay, so I guess the only other question I probably should have posed is, this is my recollection as well, these three or four items, depending on how you combine them. Does the planning board members have any other significant elements that they feel that should be in this list before we get around to contemplating any conditions or a motion? If there's anything else to add, we should get it out on the table right now.
Yeah, Keith Lindelof, we can ask the applicant, why did they want to remove the line item about no blasting allowed? Does that mean there's planning on blasting?
So, Keith, good question. How about if we get to that as we go through the proposed conditions of approval? Because Jim is recommending that that be reinserted into the list of conditions. So, how about we take that opportunity to query the applicant? Okay, great. So, are we down to these three or four items?
No, this is Carolyn. It appears that one of the setbacks has been changed from the agreed 75 feet. At our last meeting, we agreed that the I-95 corridor would be 75 feet, and now it has been reduced to 50 feet, so I think that's significant. And what else is significant to me is why we can't get any movement from the fire marshal. I think that's extremely important, and I don't see how we could move forward without that information. Thank you.
Very good, Carolyn. Thank you. That's a good observation. I don't have that myself. My understanding is, and please correct me if I was mistaken, that setback was going to be a vegetated 75-foot strip. So, why somebody thinks it would be reduced to 50 feet is beyond me. Jim is raising his hand.
Yeah. Jim Lanfor, Town Planner. Coming out of the last special meeting we had for this on July 15th, I went to the building and zoning official because I wasn't, I wanted to get confirmation as to where the front yard is, rear yard, and the side yard. And so, I put in your packet a memo from the building and zoning official, Tony Santoli, and along with a little bit of a map there that shows how he drew the rear yard. What happened, Carolyn, on where you mentioned, they did have 75 feet there, but that, in fact, is a side yard, and side yards require 50-foot setback. Now, the planning board can only increase them where they abut residential zone property, and because, you know, you have an interstate here, they applied 50 feet on the map that they provided in your packet there. So, 50 feet, 50 feet is all that's required to give there. The 100-foot that we had along the residential zone properties is in place, and the plan is labeled properly as well. So, we have the front yard setback along Frontier Road, 75 feet. The rear, the rear line for this here is up in the very, very northern part, and it's not very long. It's basically like the bottom leg of that triangle that's up there. Everything else, our zoning ordinance says that anything that's not a front yard or a rear yard is a side yard. So, all the other lines are side yards, and 50 feet applies to the side yards. Now, the planning board can ask to increase that to 100 feet where it abuts residential zone property. So, they, on their map here, they did kick it back 100 feet in those side yard areas. So, you know, the plan that you have now does conform to our zoning ordinance with respect to setbacks.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. So, Carolyn, I can almost hear the wheels turning. I'm going to suggest to you that, I'm going to go back to my position when we had the discussion about the 75 versus the 100 in this same area, in that my position is the dimension that we come to at the end, whether it's 50 or 75 or 100, is less important to me than the density of the screening in that area. So, if you find 50 feet a little bit disconcerting, and I certainly appreciate that, I would be suggesting that we request the applicant to bulk up the vegetative screening in that 50-foot strip. What do you think?
I would think that's acceptable, but doesn't that also require more information on the reforestation part of this? And this change just puts everything out another session?
This is Dave Russo with Pre-Engineering. Can I just comment on that, Chairman?
Go right ahead, Dave.
The setback along I-95 was changed to 50 feet, as Jim spoke about, but in terms of the plan that you reviewed last meeting, we did not shift the panels to 50 feet. So, the panels are still at a 75-foot setback along that interstate on-ramp. So, there's a 50-foot setback, but the panels are 75 feet away. Nothing's changed over there besides a setback mark along that side of the property.
Dave, thank you very much for that clarification. I guess then what I would like to suggest is that any future plans carry the dimension of 75 feet from the property line to the panels, so that there's no misunderstanding that the panels are going to be maintained 75 feet from that boundary.
Understood. It's actually shown on the landscape plan, it's dimension, there's a 75 dimension, but it is on there.
Hey, I'd just like to comment that these types of changes just, you know, force everybody in this environment to do extra work and make sure that all of the bases are being covered again. It's kind of like a little surprise at the end of the day, and it's not a bad surprise. I'm not objecting if the vegetation is the way that we would like it to be, but I disagree mistrust, and that's not a good thing. That's not where our community wants to be right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Moses. I represent Revity. Can I comment on that, please?
Yes. Go right ahead, please.
I want to be clear to the planning board, this change did not come from Revity. This is a change that was imposed on us by the town. This is, I want the board to understand that. The building official notified Jim Lanfor that that was a 50-foot setback, and my client did not take advantage of that by moving the panels to expand. They stayed where they were. So, I just want to say there was no intent to deceive anyone. This is compliance with the town's requirements.
Understood. We get that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
If I may, Dave, you still there?
I am still here, correct.
So, you know, I rummaged through these landscaping plans, and forgive me, I'm simply not picking up the dimension of the 75 feet. Can you guide me?
It is on sheet 104, and you see the two labels on the Interstate 95 on-ramp. The label, the lower label, I'll call it, right to the right of that, you can see a dimension from the property line to the closest panel, which is 75 feet. Some of them a little further, actually, while that's true.
76 feet. Yep, I have it. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so have we cleared this particular topic?
I think so.
Okay.
Unless other planning board members have questions.
Well, it may surface again under screening, but we understand why there was a change from the 75 feet that we discussed to the 50 feet. We appreciate the applicant holding the 75-foot line at the panels, and I think we're ready to move on to the four major topics, if we're good. The first of those being decommissioning. You've all had the opportunity to review Crossman Engineering's memo of August 3rd. Yes.
Yes.
So, let's have some discussion about where we stand on the value that's now being put forth, which is, or if I have these numbers right, 278, 64, 26, but not exceeding 343, 254, 85. Let's talk about it.
This is Emily. I think it's just worth describing what we're talking about when we were talking about the August 3rd memo and some of the back and forth that we had with the solicitor this week, because I don't think this information was included online, although maybe it's been posted since then. I'm not sure if the public has access to everything that we have at this point. I don't know if it's, whose role it is to describe this August 3rd memo. I'm not sure if Crossman is there or a representative, and if the solicitor can comment as well on the conversations we had about this memo. I think that would be helpful for everyone.
That's a very good point, Emily. I do not know if August 3rd, 2020, is a public document or if it's available on the website, but do we have Crossman on the line this evening?
We do indeed. Steve, if you'd like to weigh in, you may.
Oh, good evening. Yeah, this is Steve Cabal from Crossman Engineering.
Steve, how are you this evening?
Oh, good, thanks. Good. Hope all of you all are.
Thank you very much for joining us. So, Steve, again, August 3rd, for the benefit of everyone in the audience, and without asking you to crush the details, could you briefly summarize why the document was created and the general outcome of your analysis?
Yes. Yeah, the August 3rd memo came about because there was quite a bit of discussion as to the salvage value. In our original estimate, we had allocated an estimated $200,000 as a salvage value as a separate line item, which we had subtracted from the estimated decommissioning cost of approximately $478,000. And at the last meeting, we mentioned that, well, basically, we kept the salvage value as a separate line item because the ordinance, we believe, is silent when it comes to whether or not we're allowed to subtract out or credit the salvage value. So, we did leave that as a separate line item for the board's discussion. And because the $200,000 was a very round number, it's our understanding that the board members requested a little more backup so that everyone could understand how we came up with that value and why we believe it's reasonable. So, what we did is, in the August 3rd memo, we went through, basically, we collected the data that we had previously reviewed and compiled it in a manner with the hope that the board members could follow how we came up with the $200,000 value. And again, I will state now what I said when we met a few weeks ago. I honestly believe that any estimated salvage value is speculative in the sense that the value of raw materials goes up and down like the stock market, but not always up continuously. And the reason for that is, as new technologies arise and new materials are manufactured, sometimes the value of raw materials can diminish in value. So, we selected the $200,000 value as one that we thought would be reasonable. What we did, we reviewed the materials that are going to be used to actually construct the solar field, and in Table 1, which is on page 2, we identified about five of the main material numbers. So, we have a quantity in pounds, and then we also provided the estimated current salvage value. So, based upon the weight of the raw materials times the salvage value, we came up with a subtotal salvage value of approximately $324,000. Then we went on, on Page 3, is that we do recognize that 25 years in the future, we estimate that it's possible that up to 50% of the panels could be resold. The reason we say that is, even though it's a 25-year design period, solar panels can last 30 to 40 years with only about a 25% reduction in efficiency. So, there is some value in the panels. So, we estimated a sale price of only $15 per panel, and that's based upon current data, which we found that, you know, used total panels sell anywhere from $10, $50 a panel. That came up with an additional $175,000 of additional income. Now, as I said a couple of times so far tonight, the speculative nature... Now, as I said a couple of times so far tonight, the speculative nature, the value of solar panels in the future really depends upon the technology that's going to exist 25 years from now. For example, if the new solar panels of year 25 is such, they produce a much higher wattage, then the value of the 25-year-old panels will not be as high. And that's one reason that we went with the lower sale price value of only $15. So if we can sell 50% of the panels, we're assuming that the other 50% will be recycled as opposed to landfilled. The reason we did that is it's more expensive to recycle than to landfill. And we talked to a few recycling companies, and I talked to one again today, and they confirmed that they could recycle solar panels for no more than $15 per panel. And as you can see in our estimate on page 3, we actually used a higher value of $20 per panel. And then we also added on an extra $2 per panel for transportation costs, which came to a total cost of recycling of about $256,000. So when we add up the scrap value based on actual materials, the potential sale price of 50% of the panels, and subtract out the recycling cost of 50% of the panels, we came up with the net salvage value of $242,776. And as, I know I repeat myself, as I said a few times, knowing the speculative nature, we reduced that $242 down to $200,000, which is what's reflected in the, in the estimate itself. Now, as we went through this process, one thought that came about is that during the decommissioning, the community or the company doing the decommissioning will have to expend the $478,000 to do the decommissioning and the transportation. And the net salvage benefit comes after the fact. And so I'm concerned, we certainly want to make sure that the community has sufficient funds. But we should also recognize that any salvage value credit should go to the landowner or operator. And one last thing is going through the solar ordinance. We did see that the ordinance does state that the town reserves the right to recoup any cost of decommissioning from the landowner and/or operator. So when I read that, my, my impression is that in addition to the assurance of having the decommissioning bond, I do believe that the way the ordinance is written, the community could also go back to the landowner or operator to recoup any additional decommissioning costs if in the future the bond value does not cover the actual cost. But I do know that is subject to the town solicitor's opinion. That's a very brief overview. I hope I didn't go on too long.
Oh, you did a great job, Steve. Thank you so much. So listen, right out of the gate, I have a couple of questions that maybe you can just put my reservations to bed. So you've heard some at our last meeting with regards to this salvage value. The board members were questioning, was the salvage value, your testimony, is a, I think you're using the term speculative. You broke it out.
Broke it out.
As a separate item. Several board members, the possibility of the striking the salvage value. You're right out of the equation. Now, this almost seems to be enforced by your comment, both verbally this evening and in the fourth paragraph of your memo, that in fact, the entire decommissioning cost has got to be handled upfront by someone before anybody gets salvage value back. So my question to you is this. In your opinion, is it a reasonable position to strike salvage value, knowing that whatever the salvage value is, is going to go back to the, the applicant, the property owner, the developer, whoever it might be? What's your take on that?
I, I agree with that statement.
I'm sorry, you, that's, hold on, let me, let me get to the bottom of it. You agree with that statement as in, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I, I agree that the, I agree that the town has to have sufficient cost to do the actual work of the decommissioning in that the salvage value comes in after the fact. So, so it would be reasonable not to subtract it all at this time with an understanding that it would be credited to the landowner or operator at the time that the community receives that salvage value.
Okay. All right, I'll accept that. And again, just as to your comment about, I know that you and the solicitor have weighed in on the topic that, yes, at the appropriate time, the town can pursue, how shall I put this, in the event that the decommissioning value is inadequate, the town can pursue this through the current property owner. Well, I got to tell you that as a planning board member, that is the last position I want to put the community in. Yes, I realize that we might be able to do that, but the hoopla that will ensue, I mean, I can't even envision. So that would be the last position that I would be taking as a board member. So having heard from Steve, board members, any other questions for Steve on his memo of August 3rd?
Mr. Chairman.
I have none.
Board, board members first, please.
This is Carolyn. Based on your comments regarding having been pursuing costs from the landowner, I don't, I don't know, and I need the solicitor to help, but how, how, how does that happen if the landowner is not part of the decommissioning agreement? I mean, I would expect that the owner would have to sign off on that.
I'll certainly let the solicitor weigh in on that. But please, Sean, when you do, I also want to hear about your experience in trying to bring someone 25 years into the future into decisions that are made today. That's really the crux of that issue. Please hear with us your thoughts.
Right. I mean, can I have Carolyn repeat her, her question again? She, it was kind of unclear as to her statement.
Okay. In, in the proposed agreement and zoning or?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Carolyn, I'm sorry, Carolyn, hello? This is the court reporter. I need Carolyn to repeat that, please.
Okay. I'll take my time. So we, we've heard that the town has the leverage to pursue costs from the landowner in the event that the town becomes responsible for decommissioning. My question for the solicitor is, how can we document an agreement today if that landowner is not actively participating in the agreement?
Right. Well, so it's governed by the, the ordinance. It's, it's not an agreement per se. You have the, the authority to, if it gets to the point where you are entering into a decommissioning phase and the town is required to perform the decommissioning, it can then attach, whether it's put a lien on a property or somehow collect the costs incorporated with decommissioning. But there's, there's no agreement per se. This is, this is the ordinance governing this property. So the landowner, as well as the PSE, the PSES owner and operator, could be held liable for the costs and expenses up until and including reasonable attorney's fees under the ordinance that would be governing this property.
Okay, I appreciate that guidance, Sean. You, I'm not really getting what I want. So yes, I hear the words. But what I really want to know is, I mean, do you expect a subsequent landowner to just sit back and accept all this stuff? The first call he's going to make is to his attorney, and you guys are going to be swinging at each other at the town's expense. This is my concern.
Well, and again, I, my answer to that would be, under the ordinance, it allows for collection of reasonable attorney's fees. So yes, the upfront costs are certainly at the town's expense. But then once that, if there is any litigation, any collection costs, reasonable attorney's fees can be collected. So the court, the town would be made whole at the conclusion of the decommissioning process, if it were to get that far. But again, you have the, the decommissioning escrow that you're looking to set. That's going to be protection. And this is, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the worst case for your backup plan if things don't roll out as we would have hoped they would 25 years into the future. So this is layers upon layers of protection.
Yes, and thank you. And again, I, with, I feel it's an obligation to take the conservative position.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, you're breaking up. I can't hear you. This is the court reporter.
I'm sorry. Call me out on that anytime. Again, while I, I don't want to be pessimist here. I feel it's my obligation, most conservative value here, put the town best position. I have to think that our, that we're identifying is going to cover all of our costs. Hopefully, the town doesn't get involved in the first place. But in the, or the eventual, it does. But the number that we're targeting satisfies everything that's required to get this job done. So I'm still anxious to hear other board members on the topic of decommissioning.
This is Carolyn. I have one more comment on that note. We're, not being a pessimist, we're assuming that putting a lien on a piece of property 10, 20 years down the road, we're assuming that that property is going to be valued at an amount that is going to cover the variables. And there's a lot of variables because we're looking into the future. I just wanted to make that comment and enough.
Okay, thank you. Other board members?
Yeah, Keith Lindlow here. I'm not sure I have any questions because aren't we obligated to go along with Crossman's findings? Isn't that what we were dictated to a couple of weeks ago? Whatever their representative and the numbers that they state are non-negotiable, non-questionable? Is that correct, or is that not the right path?
Well, let me step into that one, and then I, I'm sure that Sean will step in right behind me. So, yes, you are correct. The solicitor has cautioned us that we have an expert. The expert has put together his number for decommissioning. But my position is, as it was last time around, is that he has identified, and Steve, this is not a criticism, he's identified a salvage value number that we're all admitting is speculative, to use his word. So we have an expert who's admitting a certain level of uncertainty. I feel that the planning board has some latitude here to revise that. You don't see me questioning any of his, you know, million pounds of aluminum or any of that. That's his area of expertise. He's brought that to the forefront. I'm prepared to admit to that and accept it. But when you enter a value that admittedly is uncertain, I think the planning board has some latitude. Sean, I'm anxious. I hear your opinion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So when the planning board is hearing issues like, similar to this, or a decommissioning value is provided from an expert, the planning board must base its opinion off of that, the, the expert information that is provided. And indeed, you are correct that this is, has been testified to speculative in the sense that we're talking about something 25 years out. However, the testimony also was that this was a reasonable estimate as to salvage value. So I think unless there is expert testimony that there is a other reasonable salvage value number, I don't think you can simply just pick another number to just input into the overall decommissioning value.
Okay. Okay, I'll accept that. Carolyn, does this answer our question?
As much as it could be expected at this point, it, I still feel like I am missing pieces of information, but I don't know what that is right now, so I'm, I'm good for now.
Okay. Planning board members, any other questions on decommissioning?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
Okay, as, as I'm trying to understand here what's, what's going on, Mr. Cabral, in his opinion, thought that the 43460388 is reasonable now if we deduct the $200,000 salvage price because the $200,000 salvage would come after. It was actually decommissioned, excuse me, and the work was done. That being said, if we took the $434,000 in the escrow account, what would that be worth in 25 years? That's something that we haven't really, really discussed. I mean, even at the 293, we're looking at over $500,000 in 25 years, which is a sizable amount of money. So just to clarify some of this, you know, whether or not Mr. Cabral has the authority, and I don't mean any disrespect there, to say that we should pay the, or should request the 434. So that's kind of a gray area for me. Does this have to go back to Revody for final approval, or where do we stand on that?
Well, great question. So listen, let me cut right to the chase. My thinking would be as follows. In light of Sean's recommendation, I'll profess that I'm, I hear the words. I want to try and embrace my solicitor's comments. I'm not all warm and fuzzy about it. But my suggestion at this point would be, we should be taking the 434, taking off the salvage value and adding the 25% contingency that we're allowed to add in, which if I'm not mistaken, brings us to the 343 number. Jim, am I on the right track?
Well, the way, the way it was calculated, the 10% or the 25% contingency was calculated on the base decommissioning estimate. And the $200,000 in either case was subtracted as a last operation. So if you're suggesting to take the $200,000 off the base, the base decommission estimate, which would, which, you know, that would bring it down to 234603, and then throw a contingency on there of, you can go as much as 25% if you wanted to. It's whatever the board wants. I mean, keep one thing in mind, that the applicant has already agreed, if you look at their proposal that they put, they've already agreed to accept So, so I guess, I guess it would be up to the planning board to try and justify a number that's greater than that. I don't know how you do it.
Exactly. So in light of Sean's recommendation, again, while I'm not warm and fuzzy about it, that's, that's the direction that I'm headed in personally. I'd like to hear what the other planning board members think about that approach.
This is Carolyn. I have a question about the whole decommissioning umbrella. Are we including? Are we including the forestation in that number?
I'm fairly certain that Steve's comment is, let me get to it, it's on the last page, excluding reforestation.
Okay. And weren't we directed by our solicitor that this number has to include the forestation?
I'm not aware that reforestation is on the table for this particular project.
I didn't think so. I guess maybe Sean can answer that.
I concur with the chairman.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other planning board members, trying to get to closure on the decommissioning number.
I'm still not clear that there's any leeway for us to question that any further, unless we have another expert testimony, but we have to go along with our expert, it sounds like, the hired engineer.
Keith, I'm agreeing with that.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not terribly fond of the idea, but that's where we're going.
Agree, yeah, yeah.
This is Emily, I'm inclined to agree with you both. I was hoping that the testimony from the engineer about the salvage value would allow us to remove that from this equation, but if that's not something we're allowed to do, then I think you two both have identified the next best thing, which is going with this 343 number.
Good as a guess, I guess.
So, we're closing in on the, on a consensus that the 343 and change is the number that we're going to start talking about for decommissioning?
Yes, I'm agreeable to that. I don't see we have any choice, yes, I'm agreeable.
Okay, so it'll get recited again in the condition, so I'm not looking for a vote or a confirmation, I just want to get a consensus that we're at least moving in the right direction on the topic before I go to the applicant to ensure that they're in concurrence. So, if the planning board is okay, and you don't think I'm out of line, I'd like to request the applicant's okay, if you will, for the 343 and change number.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo, we are okay. I'd like to say one thing to maybe be helpful to the town for clarity purposes. When I hire a decommissioning contractor, the decommissioning and the scrap value all in one contract, it was projected earlier that you decommission and pay for the decommissioning, and then you get the scrap value, they're net contracts. They're similar to when you hire a tree company to clear a residential lot, they take the lumber value net off their price, is the way it works. And I just finished a power plant, I bought, we have a project in, up in Maine, and it was a stacked power plant, and we took it down, but I hired a contractor, the contractor took it down, net of the scrap value. That's how the whole industry works. Certainly, if one chose to separate those two pieces, they could, but it's incredibly inefficient to have to contract in the middle of that. But that was just for clarity, nothing to change, Mr. Chairman, but just to be helpful. Thank you.
That's very insightful, I appreciate that. We're not normally, at least, I'm certainly not an expert in taking one of these projects apart, sounds like you have some insights, and we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I agree with his theory, but when you're talking about that, that's based on current days' dollars, not what the price would be 25 years.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't know who's speaking, was that Mr. Lindellow, I need that repeated?
Yeah, it's Keith Lindellow, I'm sorry. And again, I'm not trying to belabor the issue, I'm just struggling with accepting the concept of it all, which I'm going through, I accept the concept based on our solicitor's recommendation, and I appreciate everybody's work, but that analogy to me doesn't, doesn't work, because he's talking today's dollars, the reference point that he just mentioned, versus decommissioning like this, it hasn't happened before, and it's going to occur 25 years or longer from now, so.
Yeah. The context, this is Ralph Palumbo, the context of my comment was not to challenge or advocate for the described value, was just to tell you practically how a decommissioning and salvage value contract would work. That's all.
Sure, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, very good. All right, so, I think we can leave this one behind. Next item, next item that we need to grapple with is put screening and the fence together. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting some guidance here. Well, okay, I'm sorry. So, the next item, probably only because it's a little bit easier to deal with, should be the well and the protective radius. So, my understanding from our last discussion was, at least my position personally, was the panels should be removed from the 200-foot radius surrounding the public well, with the understanding that if the Department of Health were to judge that the panels could be within that radius, that the applicant would be entitled to do that, and I'm prepared to accept that as an administrative detail. The applicant, I believe, is putting forth a position that we're going to put the panels in the rate, in the protective radius, and if the Department of Health tells us to take them out, we will. I don't particularly agree with that, especially because we have expert testimony that states that, in his opinion, in his experience, then in all likelihood, DOH is going to call for the panels to be removed. That's my recollection of where we left that discussion. So, planning board members, I'd like your input on how we will direct the applicant to handle this, let me call it, conflict. Speak right up.
This is Emily. I think that there's a, an item in the draft motion here, we can, you know, solidify this, I think, in this discussion, making it conditional on the applicant obtaining approval from the Rhode Island Department of Health to implement the site development plan as, as we will likely approve, whether they, they are allowed to put panels within the area of that well or not. So, I think it would be a condition of DOH approving it.
Emily, I concur completely, but what I'm suggesting is that on the approved plans, the panels do not appear in the protective radius area.
This is Carolyn, and I am opposed to the panels overlapping into that protective radius. I don't think it should end up being somebody's maintenance project to connect those dots after the fact, and from a construction perspective, why waste the money if your intention is a 50/50 chance to take them out? I would prefer that if the Department of Health made the approval, that they put the panels there after that is done.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Moses.
Tom, I'm actually, I'm actually interested in a couple of more planning board opinions, but I certainly give you an opportunity to chime in.
It's what they were finished, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
No problem at all. Planning board members, other thoughts?
Now, my thoughts, I don't mean to suggest how these people should run their project, but it seems to me that if the well was just abandoned, and another well was drilled down near the restaurant, at $16 a foot, if you go down 100 feet, that's only $16,000. They're going to get more revenue than that out of the panels being in that 200-foot area, but, you know, that's, don't swap Yankee, I mean, just figuring the least path of resistance, or path of the least resistance, I should say.
Yes, Ron, I hear those, I hear that suggestion, and again, I'm perfectly okay, if the applicant decides to put another well in another location with panels that don't encroach into the protective radius, I'm perfectly okay with that. That should be the subject of their DOH application. But, for the plans in front of us this evening, that we may approve, it would be my recommendation that when those plans return to us for revisions, they do not show panels within the protective radius of this existing well. That's my, that's my personal position.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I'm saying, that, you know, just forget about that area, don't put any panels there, and if the DOH says you can, then you can, but, you know, it seems to me the path of the least resistance is to just move the well.
I agree.
It sounds like this has been resolved now. You know, I've got a couple of site plans in front of me, one of them shows, they both show a pump house, one of them shows a radius with no panels in it, the other plan does not. So, here, I would love to go to the applicant to tell me that you've already dealt with this.
Deb would like to weigh in.
Okay, so, just before, Tom, before I get to you, Deb, I understand you have a comment for us?
Deb, go ahead.
Deb, are you out there?
Her hand is raised, and she's unmuted, but...
If you are speaking, we do not hear you.
There we go, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay. Um, no, everybody, this is Deb O'Leary, Conservation Commission liaison.
Thank you.
It's really, that, the well is an issue. If that, if the other building is going to be occupied and it's going to be in use, then they can't put panels within the 200-foot radius. I doubt that the Department of Health would approve that. So, now they have to make a decision, are they going to accept that, or are they going to move the well to a better location for the building that's behind them? That's...
Very good, Deb, thank you.
That's all, okay, thank you.
So, Tom, I was about to reach out to you to see if there's been some clarification on the issue of the well and the protective radius.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What I was about to tell you is, you had discovered the second plan that shows no panels within the radius. So, our intention was that both plans be approved, you can only put panels there subject to the approval of the Department of Health. If the Department of Health doesn't give us the authority to put them there, there won't be panels there. That's why we provided you both plans, so you could see it without those plans. That's why that was done, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you.
I was doing that, trying to bring your attention, there were two plans, so you could see the second one.
Got it, thank you for that clarification. So, now, listen, on the two plans, let me just be absolutely clear. I am looking, forgive me, I'm stepping away from the mic, I am looking at two plans, they are both entitled, overall site layout plan, they both carry the same revision date, one, and I'm sorry, and they both identify a pump house in approximately the middle of the site, east and west, and just somewhat north of the wetland feature, which is north of Frontier Road. One of the plans has, what I believe, is a radius that shows no panels within that area. I, on the right track so far?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So, what's going on with the well that's currently servicing the restaurant facility on either of these plans?
It's there, Mr. Chairman.
And yet, and yet there are panels shown in, on both plans, in the 200-foot protective radius of that well, is that correct?
One of the plans has a radius of 200 feet, showing no panels.
No, I'm referring now to the, to the well that currently services the restaurant facility.
This is Dave Russo with the pre-engineering, the well is located next to where that pump house arrow is pointed, and it has the 200-foot radius on it, in that plan, we removed all the panels from that radius.
I'm sorry, David, so I misunderstood, so that, that pump house identification on both plans is where the existing well is that services the restaurant facility?
That is correct.
Okay. So, then, in fact, you have done what some board members suggested last time around, which is to remove the panels within the 200-foot protective area of the existing well. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it was, it was never the applicant's intention to actually construct those and then remove them at DOH. We just had them shown there, and if DOH was going to tell us we had to remove them, we would remove them, and at the meeting last month, it was concerned with that, so we're just taking the opposite approach, not showing them there, subject to DOH approval, they'll either be there or not, or the well may be relocated.
So, that's great, and I appreciate your taking our concerns to heart. So, the only change that I would be personally recommending, as opposed to Tom's recommendation, is not approving both plans, but approving the plan that shows the panels removed from the protective radius area, with the understanding that, should DOH issue you an approval to put those panels there, that is entirely their jurisdiction, and I would be prepared to accept their direction. So, that would be my personal approach. Planning board members, tell me what you think.
This is Ron, I find that acceptable.
This is Carolyn, I agree with that, and I, I would also like the applicant to tell us how many feet, we're looking at one plan right now, but it's the one that shows the 200-foot radius, how many feet would the panels be put, should you get that approval? And how does that change the output of the site?
This is Ralph Palumbo, Carolyn, I can't tell you how many panels, it will increase the output of the site, but marginally, maybe by 5%, but I'm looking at, and when I say that, I'm looking at the total panel layout, and looking at the differential between the two, the two layouts that Dave Russo did.
So, so how many feet are we talking about? Are we talking about 100 feet?
It's a 200-foot, it's a 200-foot radius, we'll be working, if we get the approval from DOH, we'll be working within that sparse circle that David put together. We'll be putting panels there, subject to, you know, the road and the setback requirements that would, would be imposed on us.
Okay, I, so I guess I'm asking you to make an assumption, like how close to the, to the well would you get? And maybe you can't do that right now, that, that was my inquiry, thank you.
No, but let me try and help. If we got the approval from DOH, they would tell us, it's not 200 feet, it's 100 feet, or maybe it's what the other commissioner suggested, that the, the well is moved from that location to the parking lot. And I have met with the property owner and had a number of discussions with them, just about that. So, that, that is an option that we're pursuing, and I think the budget estimate that was used earlier, 15,000, 16,000 is what is at stake, and, you know, seems to be, from a developer standpoint, it seems to be a good investment, economic investment, and collaborative investment between the two property owners.
Okay, very good. Other planning board members weighing in on this particular topic?
Now, I slowed down the process, but tell...
Oh, I slowed down the process, but it sounded like maybe we should just involve the Department of Health now and get a final ruling before we make a decision. You know, it's a if, then, this, that, why don't we just, have we applied to the Department of Health and asked for their opinion?
Respectfully, that's not what's on the table.
Okay.
You could, you could certainly take that position when, when it comes time to conditions.
Yeah.
Listen, if you want to put something like that on the table, then you're certainly welcome to do that.
Sure. Take me then, next question. I'm off that.
This is Emily. I have a question. If, um, you know, after getting the DOH information, if the well is going to be moved and/or if panels will be built in some new radius, will this be considered a, a major or a minor plan change, kind of relative to what we were talking about earlier with the different project, where Jim receives notification from the developer that something has changed on the ground and they need to make an adjustment? Is this something we'd be notified of, or how would that work?
Jim Lamb, Town Planner. I would view something like that as a minor change. The addition of a few panels, extra panels, is, you know, in my mind, consistent with the overall development plan for the site. It's just, just a question of, I think the prudent way to go here is to approve a plan with a protective 200-foot radius around the well, not showing any panels. If, if down the line, depending upon how things work out, there, there is no longer a well there, or if the Department of Health approves panels with the well there, however it works out, if they get approval to put the panels there, then I would say that they can put the panels there, it's a minor change, in my, my mind.
This is Carolyn. I just have one more comment, the food for thought type of thing, is, um, how do we know that the well can be moved closer to the, the restaurant, to that facility? I would think that there's a chance. My, my question is, why was it put so far west in the first place? And I would think it would have been more economical out of the gate, to put it closer to the building. And is there some underlying reason why that wasn't done? Or an underlying reason why that wouldn't be able to happen? Because that would be, uh, it would be a tragedy, if we're going through all of this, and the well isn't going to be able for, to be relocated for all of the reasons that it would need approval.
Carolyn, quite honestly, Carolyn, listen, the, the well, first of all, all of these things happened before the current players were in place. There were, it was an altogether different strategy for this property and the development of this property. So why things got placed where they are today is, well, interesting historical discussion, but not incredibly relevant. What's more important is, the well is there, it services a facility, it has for, well, since the inception of the facility. There's, there's no reason to believe that the well is going to stop functioning. So the worst possible case is, the well stays where it is, the protective radius is honored. I see no reason why that could change. Now, if the applicant decides to start playing around with a new well, well, that's the subject of an entirely new Department of Health application. And there are a whole bunch of separation distances that have to be honored for a new well. And if they gain that approval, well, then they're certainly entitled to go forward and, and set that well. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I'm, I agree with the direction that we're going with the pump house.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure that everybody's weighed in on the well issue. Put this one behind us.
Thanks, Al.
Let's tackle screening and the fence next. So I'll open by recapping my recollection. So, as we step back and we look at the overall objective of the screening, one of my initial comments, again, these are my personal thoughts, one of my initial comments was, this is not a project that I want to see from any of the roadways or the abutting properties. So the applicant has taken that comment and come up with a strategy. I, I took exception to the strategy, specifically the idea of a stockade fence and what appears to be a single row of trees behind the stockade fence. So, I kind of thought that, there was a little bit of a consensus on the fact that stockade fences aren't really what we're trying to accomplish in our town. We, we have made exceptions under extenuating circumstances to employ them, but there, it wouldn't seem to be that this is how we're going to screen our project, with stockade fences. So I was thinking that the applicant was going to return with a different type of fence, maybe some more elaborate screening, some layering of vegetation, et cetera. That does not appear to be the case on the plans that I'm looking at. So, planning board members, first, let's weigh in on what we envision here for screening. And I want to just draw your attention, before we get all wired up on this, to condition 13, I want to make the condition premature, but I want to draw attention to it in that it's important, because in my opinion, in the event that whatever we approve here as a landscaping strategy, if it does not work out, the town has the authority to essentially come in and say, "Your plan didn't work, it needs to be powered up," and with the assistance of a licensed RLA, we're going to tell you how to do it, and you will implement it. So that condition is really important to me, but it would be very nice if we had a landscaping plan that we were all happy with and did not have to rely upon this condition. So, planning board members, give me some feedback on how you see this project being screened.
Okay, this is Ron. I'm looking at page four, in the planting area B, and it looks like the things that are planted are basically two rows, and it provides pretty good screening. That's what they're doing over here on Maxon Hill, near my house, and it, it looks like a nice job. So I would say that I'm happy with what they've got listed here. Looks like several species of trees, but, you know, they're, they're close together, and one row goes into the gap of the other row to hide it. So when they fill out a little bit, they're good.
I don't know, Ron, I'm looking at that sheet, and yes, I see one detail that has some, let me call it, layering of vegetation, but the other two details just have a single row of trees, one after the other. Am I missing something?
The way that I'm seeing it, I may be wrong, the planting area C, I believe is what you're talking about, that is well back from Maxon Hill Road, and there's the natural vegetation that's in the way there. They've got plants along the fence line. I could be mistaken, but...
Mr. Chairman, this is John Carter. Could I speak for that?
Yes, John, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, if I, if I could, um, what is proposed, and what Ron just described is correct. So, basically, just to go, go back a little bit to understand, because I, I don't want you to get the sense that, you know, we're being obstinate. We, we definitely listen to what you say and, and would like to accomplish what it is and, and make it satisfactorily. I have said several times, or say again, if the understanding is you will not see this from anywhere, I'm not going to make that statement. But we'll do the best we can to screen it, to minimize it, to buffer it. Now, go, going back to the original proposal back in January, my first proposal was along the access road onto 95. There's significant existing vegetation, both on this property and out on the state right-of-way. It's primarily deciduous, there's a few evergreens in there. Uh, there's an understory, there's an overstory, and it's thick. And we came in with some photographs that showed it, and I actually showed some eye-level views, using a, a rod, that showed six feet and eight feet and so forth. And we then proposed infill planting with a variety of evergreens, and referenced the fact that on the site, there's, because of the sort of successional field that's occurring out there, is numerous. I haven't counted them, I'd say at least close to 100. White pines, red cedars, which are evergreens, which are native, which clearly like growing on this location, because they seeded themselves in. They're very transplantable, and they're eight feet to 10 feet tall in general. And we had proposed using them as infill. And the feedback we got was that that wouldn't be significant enough, it wouldn't be immediate, and that we didn't want to be able to see this thing immediately. So those types of plantings, I think, and to be used as a screening, are, um, you know, it's kind of a commitment on the part of the, of the developer, and it's on the part of the, of the town, the community, to, to start with something that is actually doable in terms of planting and establishing plants, because that's a, that's not, you know, that's not a fixed thing. That, they're plants, and they're, they're alive, and some grow fast, some grow slow, some die, some get eaten. So it's a bit of a commitment, and in my opinion, over a long period of time, it's a better solution. But it's a, it's a period of time. And the feedback we got was that that was not the way that you envisioned it. So we came back with the solution, or with a proposed, excuse me, proposed solution, that we would use something that was immediate, and a berm, a vegetated earthen berm, which would be, you know, i- i- over time, the, the grasses and, and natural weeds and things that would come in over the seeding of the berm, would just naturalize this thing and make the berm and make it go away, with a fence on top of it, and planting in addition to the fence in some areas. And that was to create, that was the solution to our mandate, that we wanted, that you want an immediate solution. Now, over on the Maxon Hill roadside, there's a couple of things going on there. One of them is the intersection with Frontier Road, and as you're coming into the site, you can see into the entrance road currently. So we did some planting to screen that. The road was reconfigured slightly, so that it takes a right angle, so you can't see into the site down the road. And there'll be fairly significant vegetation, a lot of it's evergreen, right at that entrance road coming off of Frontier Road. We then proposed a berm to run down along Maxon Hill Road. The, the vegetation between the edge of the pavement and the fence on the project is proposed to be selectively cleared, understanding, and I know by now, everybody understands that, that shade is an issue. Obviously, the north, it's not a big issue, the south, it's the main issue. So this is sort of the south and the southeast. So selective removal of trees over a certain height, this, the existing vegetation out there is primarily tall deciduous oaks with a very thick understory. I went back out there last week with the engineer and, and one of the Revity members, and we walked it and we looked at it, and so there's white pines coming in, which are evergreen, and there's a thick, in, in the season, there's a fairly thick understory that's hard to see through. The intent is to leave that understory there and take the larger trees that will cast shade. So then we have a berm and a fence, and we try to demonstrate, using cross-sections, how that would be effective, and how it would work from different vantage points. Not suggesting it's going to be 100% effective, but while it's being put in, our intent would be to pay attention to that, and if it needs to be, if the berm needs to be a foot or two higher to be very effective, then that's what would be done. Then, the last thing is, the fence is unspightly. So we proposed putting plantings of evergreens in front of the fence. So on a Maxon Hill ride, the roadside, you would have the edge of the pavement, you would have the thick understory, and then you would have the berm with an evergreen screen planted on it, a solid fence, and then behind that would be the, the project. So I, I just want, so everybody understands what we're proposing and why, so you don't, you know, we're not, we're, we're trying to listen to what you're saying, but, and thinking that, you know, this is a solution that meets the requirements that you, you've asked us to do. The ordinance doesn't say in it, "Make this so you can't see it," but it uses words like "screen," "in buffer," and so forth, and I understand what that means, and I understand that we want to try to do what we can to, to soften the view of this, and over time, maybe block it completely, but then take a little bit of commitment on, in terms of planting.
Okay, very good, John, thank you. Planning Board members, other thoughts?
Okay, this is Carolyn. We still need to address the wooden fence versus the chain link. A wooden fence doesn't have a long shelf life, it's not going to last the life of the project. And who's going to be around to repair it when these plantings are pushing it over or when it starts to disintegrate? I think Al mentioned earlier that we are not really interested in seeing wooden fencing. And considering the industrial nature of this project, I would think that the wooden fencing, it, it's inappropriate.
Good, Carolyn, thank you. John, may I make a, let me offer a question. So I get the whole idea behind the fence, and I, believe me, I truly appreciate your trying to grapple with a solution that affords us a, a certain immediacy in terms of screening the project. But may I inquire, can't we consider, so these projects typically are surrounded by chain link fence? Can't we, can't we consider a chain link fence that has vegetation, I don't want to say embedded in it, I'm, I'm right on the cusp of my knowledge base here, but I, I think you know what I'm alluding to. I've seen them in certain places. Essentially, the vegetation is clinging to the fence, using it as, so, so can you, can you give me some guidance? Is this a viable option?
I, I can, Al, and actually, that's a preferable option. So if it would give some satisfaction to the board, and you and the board, I, I think that it would make me actually feel better about the solution. You know, the fire department prefers a chain link fence. It's permanent, as Carolyn pointed out, the wood has a light to it, you know, a panel falls down, another panel falls down, they look really terrible. I, what I would like to see is the same proposal, only continue the chain link fence, put the evergreens, which in this case, we're going to try to use the white pines that are out in the field, some of the red cedar, and plant them in front of the fence, and they will grow through the fence. When you said embedded, that's a good word. They actually, the branches grow through the fence, a- and if you put them in young, white pines get big, they get thick, and they get big, they get very big, they get ultimately 50 or 60 feet. I don't know if I'll be around for that, but they're a fast grower, and they'll grow right through the fence, and then the fence kind of disappears too. So it's kind of a win-win, where you're blocking the view and you're softening, of, of the panels, and you're softening the fence at the same time. And I, I think that's a great way to go, and I think that the Revity team would be happy to... be happy to stick with the chain link fence.
And just to flesh out that idea a little bit more, if the planning board members are, uh, feel that we're moving in the right direction, John, would it be appropriate to introduce, uh, a different, well, not a different, but an additional type of planting that's going to, uh, you know, creep into the fence, or are we stuck waiting for the white pine to do the job? Can, can you help me out with an idea there?
Yeah, so the white pines, if we planted them on top of the berm next to the fence, they'd literally grow through the fence in a year or so. Um, so that's not a problem. And they grow fast. We've got some red cedars out in the field, they would do the same thing. So, um, it, it would really be, it would be, I, I, what you're saying, I think, is what I'm saying. And the plants would be, you know, they would basically be touching the fence when they were installed. So, uh, yeah, they, they would, I think, I, I, so I like mixing up the species for a different reason, um, kind of a monoculture approach where you put all the same plant in, and if then an insect or a disease gets some, you lose them all. So I think the idea here is to use white pines, to use, uh, red cedars, and then possibly use some of the arboridie, the green giant arboridie that have some deer resistance. They're a little bit pinned to the wall when it comes to evergreens these days, uh, because of the deer impact, and if they eat, you know, bottom six feet, it kind of doesn't do you much good up above that. So, uh, I think the white pines, they don't eat, the, um, uh, red cedars, they eat a little bit, but they're not their favorite. And I, so I, I think the idea of mixing up the evergreens, tucking them tight up against the fence, I think they'd grow through within a year.
Okay.
It could be on the front, by the way, so you wouldn't, the, the plants would be on the front side, the roadside of the fence.
Correct.
So they'd be screening it, and you kind of don't care what it looks like from the inside so much.
Got it. All right, well, listen, personally, I, I like this direction a lot more than the, the concept of the stockade fence. I'd, I'd like to hear from the planning board members as to whether they think we're moving in the right direction.
This is Ron. I tend to agree, the plants, the planted trees near the chain link fence does sound like a better idea.
Yeah, Keith here. Uh, thanks, Al, for leading the way on that. I agree with you. I like the chain link.
This is Emily. I agree. Um, sorry to cut you off there, Keith. Um, I only have one further comment, and that is about maintaining these setbacks in a vegetated condition as required by the ordinance. Um, and I think we're there, but I just wanted to emphasize that. So this plan combined with that, I think, would be in great shape.
This is Carolyn. Um, I, I'm thrilled that we're moving in this direction, and I'd also like to send some compliments out there to the Revity team. I, I love the idea of repurposing the, uh, trees and, and whatever plantings they're going to be removing from the site. Uh, it, it's a win-win in, in a, in a lot of different areas, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Emily, could I just return to your comment, please? Because in reviewing the, uh, I forget which sheet it might be for, uh, over on the Maxon Hill side, the 100-foot area, uh, and John, please, please chime in on this. I'm looking at your detail, and I thought we had agreed that the 100 feet was going to be, was going to remain vegetated. And I don't think that's what the detail discloses. Now, the understanding, again, my recollection, was we're fully cognizant of the fact that certain specimen trees need to be removed. We get that. Personally, I'm okay with it. But, uh, I thought we had agreed that the 100-foot area from the boundary inward toward the property was going to be maintained in a vegetative state. Am I incorrect?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to let, uh, I'm, I'm not actually adjusting the setbacks. Uh, if Dave Russo, if you're there, can you maybe bring Al up to speak?
Yeah, so the, on that side of Maxon Hill, the, the panels are located 100 feet off the property line. Between the panels and the line, there's vegetation in the form of grass, uh, you know, the planted trees that John just spoke of, the existing understory between the berm and Maxon Hill, that's to remain. So within the 100-foot setback, there will be forms of vegetation in, in grass trees, the existing understory. So it'll all be in a vegetative state.
That's not exactly what I said. So unless you want me to make this a condition, what I thought we had agreed to was that the panels can certainly stay 100 feet from the boundary, but that fence line and your vegetation need to be pulled back to the panels.
Why, why, why would that? It's vegetation. I mean, the vegeta, it's vegetation within the 100 feet, grass is vegetation. Vegetation is not specific. Grass is not vegetation.
Grass doesn't do the job.
But, but grass is vegetation, though, so it's a form of vegetation. And the, and the intent of that, and the intent of that in the ordinance is to prevent having, uh, pavement abutting, uh, property lines. And it's, it's specific to a commercial and manufacturing zones a lot of times, so you don't have parking lots up against the property lines. So a lot of times what happens is when the setbacks, they have grass areas with a landscape area. So if a Walmart or a Target came into this property, they wouldn't be able, uh, to put the parking right up to the property line, they would have to maintain vegetation within the setback. That vegetation can be grass, it can be landscaping, it can be existing vegetation, but it's, it's vegetation.
Well, that's a very interesting interpretation, but I seriously doubt that the other planning board members would concur that that's been the gist of our discussions throughout this application. So listen, don't let me, don't let me drive the bus on this. Other planning board members chime in. I'm simply giving you what I, I remember from our discussion.
I concur with Al. I'm sorry, this is Carolyn, I'm sorry I stepped on you, Emily. I concur with Al. Grass does not constitute screening. Thank you.
Wait, it's good, the wording is vegetation, though, not screening.
And it's not, this is John Carter. It's, it's not the width of the buffer vegetation that makes it effective, it's the quality, and it's, it's, you know, you can see, we all know, you can see through 100 feet of vegetation. If you've got tall trees and no understory, you can see 300, 400 feet through the vegetation. So the width isn't the issue. The issue is, you know, what are you going to put there and how dense it's going to be, and how opaque it's going to be. And I think what we're proposing, particularly on a Maxon Hill roadside, is going to accomplish an opaque screen. So I think that, that, that again, it's, it's not so much the, the width, it's the, it's the quality of the buffer planting that would make it effective and not effective. And we know we can't, can't up against the panels.
John, thank you. I, I think Jim might have something to...
Yeah, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. I'd like to direct your attention, all of your attention, to the landscape plan. And if you look at the landscape plan legend, there is a light shade of green, and it says, "Vegetation to be cleared." So, uh, that goes right up to the panels along Maxon Hill Road. Now, I just want to read to you from the ordinance, and the ordinance is pretty clear. It says that clearing of any existing vegetation within the front, rear, and side yard setback areas is prohibited unless explicitly approved by the planning board. Now, as one who goes out and enforces and monitors the construction of these, of these projects, okay, uh, the only thing that I can enforce out there with the applicants is the approved plan. So I would just advise the planning board members to take a look at this landscape plan. And once you approve the landscape plan, I'm going to assume that your explicit, um, permission to, to do, to implement that plan, including clearing, including vegetation, everything that's specified in there, that's the only thing I'm going to be able to hold the applicant to. So you've got to decide now whether you're against the clearing as shown on that landscape plan, or what, how you want to modify it. So that's, you know, it's, it's pretty crystal clear that no clearing is allowed unless the planning board approves it, so, that's all I got to say.
Very good, Jim, thank you. So listen, I'll just weigh, weigh in on this personally. My recollection is the last time we talked about this, there was a 100-foot distance from Maxon Hill Road that was going to be retained in its current state in addition to the proposed plantings, with the understanding that select specimen vegetation was going to be cleared, these are the large trees I'm referring to, simply because they were inconsistent with the objective of the project. That was my recollection, that's what I'm prepared to stick with. Planning board members, feel free to agree or disagree with me.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Moses. May I comment?
Well, if I could just get the planning board members' time, then I'm more than happy to hear you.
Okay.
Uh, Keith, this is...
Keith, were you saying something? I think you broke up a little bit.
Oh, I was just saying, I agree with Al, 100%.
Okay. Um, I, I just want to elaborate on my concerns, because this is the most sensitive area of the project to abutters, right? And there's a bunch of people that live right across the street, and this is also the only part of the plan where it talks about area of selective clearing in that legend, in the landscape plan. And it's, it's true, there's also a strip that says, "Existing vegetation to be removed." So I, uh, I'm supportive of the wording in the ordinance that vegetation, vegetation clearing should be prohibited. And I'll, my personal opinion, and even to go further than Al, and I don't think that large specimen trees from this 100-foot buffer need to be removed to allow sun to get in from the east side of the panels. I have a strip of land just like this in my yard, and no shade is cast. This is the driest, hottest part of my yard, is, you know, to the west of this eastern tree line. Um, there is absolutely no shade cast by trees in the east. So I, I just, I want to protect the residents across that street, and I think absolutely no clearing of vegetation in that 100-foot span can occur.
Very good, thank you, Emily. Anyone else care to weigh in on this?
Emily, I agree with you. This is Carolyn. Al, I agree with you. Thank you.
Okay, this is Ron. I agree that we should leave all the trees that we can. However, a lot of those trees in that area are dead or dying, there's, there's a lot of stuff that could really be cleaned up. That being said, there's already a berm proposed along Maxon Hill there, and if we go to the chain link fence and put the, the planted shrubs right next to it, to my eyes, that would be a more attractive thing to have. But as I said in the beginning, the more that's already there that we can save, the better.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
I'm kind of liking Emily's idea. So Emily, would you be, uh, would you be agreeable to, uh, some middle ground where the dead or dying large specimen trees could be removed? And I'm thinking more just about the aesthetics of the project. Uh, and maybe not so much the large specimen trees that are healthy. What do you think?
Sure, sure. I think that makes sense.
And we could structure a condition such that, uh, the town works in concert with the landscape architect for the project to decide whether a tree is a go or no go, based on, based on that criteria.
Sure.
Uh, so I think that concludes planning boards. Uh, Tom, did you have something you wanted to, uh, to add to the mix?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, we, there's been a lot of discussion on this issue over these meetings, and, um, it's very clear that we have been very honest and open, saying that there's the need to remove large trees from this area. Um, and what you are doing by saying that everything stays no matter what, you're essentially reducing the size of this project. Um, that doesn't work for my client. So, and I thought we had an agreement on how we were going to handle this, and that trees that created shadow that we were going to be able to take out. Um, I think it's very important that we stay on track of where we were. Um, and I think that the plan that Mr. Carter has come forward with meets all your requirements. So I would respectfully request that we stay on that plan.
Okay, duly noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palombo. Can I ask Jim Lamphier a question on what he just read? Jim, were you, uh, reading from, uh, C1 of the PSES design guidelines?
Um, yes, I am, Ralph. Second paragraph in C1, yes.
Okay, so it starts off and says, "In instances where a parcel is zoned from, rezoned, from RFR80 to commercial or manufacturing use for the purposes of accommodating a PSES." So I read that as not applicable to this particular property, because we are not in a rezone from RFR80 to commercial. We are commercial, rezoned. So why does this apply to us?
I, I had a, a discussion with our solicitor on that, and he, um, if, if you read, if you read that paragraph, and also the one that precedes it, you can see that from sentence to sentence, it varies from the specific to the general. The, the sentence that I read is not limited to instances where a parcel is rezoned from RFR80. That, that sentence that I read applies to every single project. So that, that is the, that's the, uh, ruling from my solicitor. When I discussed it with him, I was anticipating this, this to come up, and so I wanted a ruling. And I think Sean's here, he can, he can attest, he was a party to the conversation. And, um, so that's how we interpret it. No clearing in the setback areas unless approved by the planning board.
Thank you, Jim.
If you, if you could indulge, but I, I would like to hear, uh, the solicitor's explanation on that, because it's not logical to me, Mr. Chairman. Same paragraph, opposite meanings, it's just, it's just not logical.
Yep. Well, can I just, can I go a little bit further before our solicitor chimes in? The last sentence of that second paragraph, it says, "The PSES and equipment shall not have a significant adverse impact upon the soils, water, resources, et cetera." So are you saying that that sentence only applies in instances where a parcel is rezoned? No. It, it doesn't even make sense to, to have that interpretation.
I, I totally agree. It doesn't make sense, okay? But you're, you're interpreting it to your favor, and it's confusing, and it's not clear. I, I can take the same position as you in my favor. Uh, so to me, you're, you're taking a position that just favors you, and I'm reading it on its face, in its plain language. And to me, it's clear that this is talking about the opening sentence, which dictates the meaning of the paragraph. It talks about a rezone from RFR80, and we are not doing that. And you're telling me that the first sentence means one thing in the paragraph, and the other sentence means totally different. That's not how paragraphs are written.
Well, I can explain it further. Look at the heading it's under. It's under, it's under the heading of "Land Clearing." Land clearing in general, okay, that applies to all projects, okay? And the first sentence that you read, it just calls out that "In instances where a parcel is rezoned from RFR80 to commercial or manufacturing use for the purpose of accommodating a PSES, clearing of any existing vegetation on the subject parcel for the purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining a PSES shall be limited to a maximum of 40% of the total area of the parcel." So basically, basically, they're saying that in instances... everything, oh, that, we're only applying this out to parcels of rezon. And respectfully, I would say that you're interpreting this, or you're reading this to your favor. Well, you know, town staff and solicitors take our ordinances, and we interpret them the way we think it should be interpreted. So if you have an issue with our interpretation, I would say that there's a forum for you to take it to.
Okay, very good. Listen, I don't really think it needs to escalate to that point. Uh, and more importantly, if, listen, if this ends up being a condition of the planning board, then that's the way it's going to go. So, that said...
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to address this? I mean, there's not really much that else needs to be said. Jim did a fair, um, recitation of our, our discussion regarding, uh, the solicitor's interpretation of that particular paragraph, and our recommendation to the board, clearing of any existing vegetation within the front, rear, and side yard setback areas is prohibited to apply to this project.
Well, very good. No, I appreciate that. I didn't mean to skip over that.
Quite all right.
Appreciate your input.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Moses. I would just like to bring Kate to the solicitor's, um, attention. Three-point solar versus Richmond zoning board review, just recently decided on July 15th. It is very clear in that case that boards are required to follow their ordinance by the letter of the language. You're not allowed to interpret. That language that Mr. Palumbo referred to is absolutely clear, that this is referring to rezon. That is not, this is not an issue of interpretation. This is an issue of fact. I, I think you should look at that case before you make your determination.
Duly noted. So, planning board members, uh, that concludes the four bullet items that I had laid out before us. Sounds like in most cases, we have consensus on the four items. So, does anybody else have anything to add to the mix? Uh, I would very much like to have public opinion on this, and then we still have the issue of deciding whether we're going to construct a motion.
This is Carolyn. Uh, I have two comments. And the first is that on another project, we required the developer and the project owner to secure a fixed amount of money to satisfy the screening and buckering requirement according to what the abutters wanted. And that was agreeable to that developer. And I think it's a solution that could be available. One year after the project, uh, has gone online, the abutters have the opportunity to revisit the view and make recommendations. They're either satisfied or they're not, but the developer, the project owner, put money aside to secure that their concerns would be addressed. And the other comment that I, um, I had as far as what our bullets looked like were my concerns about where the recommendations from the fire marshal are. We haven't addressed that, and, uh, I'm deeply concerned that that hasn't been made available. I think it's an important part of the discussion we're having. Thank you.
Thank you. So then if there's nothing else, I'd like to consider going out to the public for comments before we tackle constructing a motion, if we're so inclined to do that. We, we okay with that?
We have two members of the public. I'm going to read off the last four digits. Please state your name for the record. 8222.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau from Old People Road. And if I understand correctly...
Can I get your name one more time? Excuse me. This is the court reporter. I need your name one more time, please.
This is Joe Moreau from Old People Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want a clarification. The comments from the public at this point are just on the four topics that you've discussed so far.
No, Joe, I'm sorry. Uh, the four topics were my short list for items that needed to be addressed by the planning board this evening. Uh, this is the first opportunity, uh, that the, the public has had to comment on the project in whole, so...
Okay.
No, the entire project is up for public comment.
Okay. My first question is, what is the date of the application of this project?
Okay, that might take just a minute to get to, Joe. Uh, while we're doing that, do you want, do you have other things that we can address for you?
Yes. Because my question is, uh, I haven't had internet for a day and a half, so I can't look at the old ordinance, but I'm looking at the January 22nd, 2019 ordinance. And, um, if that's what this project is classified under, um, if you look on page three of our ordinance that was adopted January 22nd, it states that "The applicant shall consult with the fire marshal prior to the submission of any material to the planning board for review." So that's my first point. Uh, my second point is, and Keith, uh, Keith alluded to this, on page six, um, on the line one of land clearing, it says, "No blasting will be conducted on the parcel in conjunction with any activity related to the construction of a PSES, including land preparation." And my point is that if it falls under the new classification, again, I don't know what the new, the old ordinance said. It may well have the same wording in the old ordinance, but it clearly states there has to be a conversation with the fire marshal, and there is no blasting. If we allow this to happen as far as blasting, then we open up a can of worms for any other project that may be before us. Um, I listened to the last presentation on this particular project, and I've heard it a few times tonight, and I can't tell you how many times I heard it at the last meeting, uh, where the attorney was constantly referring to your ordinance, your PSE, uh, ordinance. So we can't pick and choose what we want to follow here. It clearly states fire marshal's position, and it clearly states, uh, about blasting. Um, the other thing I haven't heard, and I hope it's top of the listing, I haven't heard a work schedule. For an example, typically, the town council and the planning board will say, uh, for an example, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, no Saturdays or Sundays. So I haven't heard, uh, any conversation, uh, about that, especially if a restaurant is going to be going in there. Um, you know, that's an issue, but the biggest concern I would have is for the residents, um, that we would not have construction or any work Saturday or Sunday, whether it's planting grass. Um, the last point I want to make is, I've been involved for the last two and a half years, whether it's a planting or a buffer, we're using semantics here, grass is still near what we're looking for. We're looking for, you know, as much as possible to prevent, and I understand the, the way that the property is laid out, that you are going to see it, but wherever we can control a planting, a buffering, that's what we need to do for our residents, uh, especially the residents on, uh, Maxon Hill and Frontier Road. And that's basically what I have to say. The only thing I don't know is, is what's the date of this application was.
Yeah, Jim Lafferty, Tom Lanner. Uh, Joe, I can tell you that, um, I can't give you the exact date without looking through a box of stuff I have here, but I know that the pre-application meeting was held for this project on, uh, in November of 2019. So there's no question that this project is subject to the current amended solar ordinance as of January the 22nd, 2019.
Well, I appreciate the clarification, Jim, and that strengthens my point that we need to follow this PSES. As the attorney eloquently, uh, told us last meeting, you need to follow your PSES. So again, on those two points, uh, I don't know if there was a discussion with the fire marshal prior to any paperwork submitted. That's something that I'm sure planning board or Jim can answer, but it, it is clear about no blasting. I have a serious problem with blasting in that area because of, again, allowing other developers to do the same thing. Thank you for your time, and thanks, Jim, and Ty for the clarification, and Al.
Very good, Joe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, next member of the public, last four digits, 2997. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Eric Bibler. I live on Woodville Road. Uh, I have a few things. I'll take the easy stuff first. Tonight, in tonight's meeting, um, the planning board has repeatedly referred to a, a document that has 24 proposed conditions. Um, I think you've also referred to a, a memo dated August 3rd, that I'm not sure whether it's from Crossman or someone else. But I just, I just want to say, it's, it's extremely hard to follow your deliberations in an intelligent way if these documents are not provided, we're, we're on a phone call, we don't even have a video, um, capability here. And I would like to respectfully request that in the future, any of these materials that are provided to the planning board and going to be the basis of the planning board's deliberations, um, please be put on the website and made available to the public, otherwise we can't really make much sense of, of what you're doing and follow you intelligently. I think that's a reasonable request.
Noted, Eric.
Okay. Um, secondly, I don't know if Mr. Cabral is still there or not, but I, I want to note for the record that, um, on July, let's see, on July 26th, 2009, 2020, I sent the letter to the planning board, uh, and the town planner, and I enumerated, uh, several specific concerns relating to decommissioning, and I specifically referred to and provided access to, um, a list of exhibits that I provided to the planning board on September 9th, 2019. I provided a link to digital copies. There were approximately 40 exhibits in that, um, in, in those documents, and I also gave hard copies to the planning board on that date. On October 1st, 2019, I gave the planning board an additional 20 exhibits, and, uh, again, on the July 26th, I provided a link to all of those exhibits. So the planning board has those in hard copy in binders from last year. The town planner has a copy, and I ask that my letter with those references be incorporated into the record of these proceedings. I just want to confirm that my letter is included in the record of this proceeding. Is, is my letter included as, as an item in...
Hold on while I look across the table among the colleagues.
Well, again, that material was presented for, um, reviewing other matters. Uh, as I just mentioned, this particular case here came, first came before the planning board in November, in the November 2019 planning board meeting. So, you know, unless you specifically presented it to the, to the planning board and asked to have it be made an exhibit, um, then it hasn't been, so...
Well, that's, that's, with all due respect, that's exactly what I did on July 26th. I gave a letter to the town planner and the planning board. I provided, uh, a link to the digital copies, and I reminded the planning board and the town planner that I had already delivered, uh, hard copies and digital copies of the exact same exhibits, and I, um, wanted those exhibits to inform the deliberations on decommissioning.
Okay, well, we certainly can, if that, if that's the case, we certainly can make them a part of the record of this proceeding, uh, but just keep in mind, it's not expert testimony. I mean, it's, it's not, we have our expert testimony that we rely upon.
That's fine. That's understood. I'm not being sworn as an expert. Okay, so the reason that's important is, um, just to lend, and I'm going to refer to one of the exhibits provided by the developer here, which I think the planning board should take note of. Um, in those exhibits that I gave to the planning board last year, and that I referred to about a month ago, less than a month ago, um, there were a number of, uh, studies about end-of-life management and, uh, management of environmental waste from, um, solar panels. One of those was a 100-page study that was done in 2016 by the International Renewable Energy Agency. That is an international agency of the, uh, of the OECD countries, the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, which is a group of Western countries, of which the United States is a member. This was a 100-page review of, um, projecting what the future holds in the way of solar panels. The very first exhibit that I gave to the planning board in September, and this is very relevant to your discussions, I think, was a graph out of that, um, uh, exhaustive study by Arena. And that graph showed that currently, as of 2020, the projected installed capacity of ground-mounted solar is, um, about 500 gigawatts. The projection in this study is that by 2050, 30 years from now, when these panels are retired, the installed capacity of solar panels around the world will be 4,500 gigawatts. It'll be nine times as much. And by, um, in 2020, the cumulative, uh, amount of waste from solar panels is so small on this graph, you can't read it. And the reason is because solar panels are relatively new, and relatively few of them have been retired. But the projection is that by 2050, there will be 78 million tons of solar panel waste by 2050. So we're going to go from zero to 78 million metric tons. This is what informs this study for Arena, and what, which is what suggests that, um, it's not going to be so easy to sell 78 million metric tons of used solar panels at a profit 30 years from now. So then I just want to call your attention, I know Mr. Cabral had said that, you know, his estimate of the recycled value was speculative, and I believe he made an assumption that half of the retired panels could be sold, and half of them might need to be recycled. But one of the documents that I believe was provided by the developer, um, was from, it might be from Crossman, I'm not sure, because it wasn't clear. This is a nine-page document on salvage and reuse value analysis that the planning board has from the last meeting. It's from an outfit called Reci-, We Recycle Solar. And in this, um, attempt to derive a valuation of the decommissioning costs, this vendor says that there are 23,336 panels. That was the assumption for his estimate. I presume that must have come from the developer, and that seems about right for a 9 and a 9.25 megawatt, megawatt project. So the, the estimate here from this recycler is 23,336 panels. Uh, the recycler says the, based on the model, I think it's based on the model that's going to be spec'd here, that's 57.3 pounds per panel. So they come up with 1,337 pounds of panels. The recycling cost per pound is 77 cents. So if all of the panels had to be recycled and none of them were sold, according to this document that you do have in your possession, the recycling cost would be 1,029,608 dollars. Now, that's not from me, and that's not from Crossman. That is actually, I believe, from the developer. Now, if you had to pay $5 per panel in shipping costs, which is, uh, in those binders that I gave you, had been estimated to me from different recyclers, that would add another $116,000 in freight to the cost of recycling. So don't take it from me, and the planning board doesn't have to speculate, but the cost... me, and that's not from Crossman. That is actually, I believe, from the developer. Now, if you had to pay $5 per panel in shipping costs, which is in those binders that I gave you, had been estimated to me from different recyclers, that would add another $116,000 in freight to the cost of recycling. So don't take it from me, and the planning board doesn't have to speculate. But the cost of decommissioning this project, and in particular, the cost of getting rid of the solar panels, is completely a function of your assumptions. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know how many will need to be recycled and how many can be sold. This outfit, We Recycle, assumes arbitrarily that two thirds, approximately, of the panels might be sold and that one third might be recycled. But with 78 million metric tons in the pipeline, no one really knows. And as I've submitted in the past, the purpose of our ordinance, our PSES ordinance, under the provision that provides for financial security, it empowers the planning board, I think it's paragraph D in that section, it provides for the planning board to determine the appropriate form and amount of a financial security to ensure that the taxpayers don't have to bear this cost. And that exercise should be a conservative one. We are not obligated as a town to bear or share in any of the business risks of the developer of this project. So I think the question for Mr. Cabral would be, and I'm happy to refer these documents to our engineer, first question would be through the chair, isn't it possible that none of these panels can be sold, to be reused 30 years from now? Isn't that completely possible with 78 million metric tons in the pipeline? And if that's possible, isn't it true that the planning board, it would be entirely reasonable for the planning board to entertain a scenario where none of them could be sold and all of them have to be recycled? If that were true, if that's a plausible scenario, if that's a scenario that the planning board is entitled to consider and can't be ruled out, then the document provided by the developer would suggest that that recycling cost is over a million dollars. So I think it would be worth having the planning board ask Mr. Cabral, ask Crossman Engineering, if he believes it is possible that none of these can be resold 30 years from now. Lastly, I just want to address one other thing. I used to lend money in my wayward youth for a New York City Money Center Bank, not for very long, but, you know, for a certain part of my career. And I'm very familiar with lending risks. And one thing that needs to be said on all of these solar projects, including this one, the typical arrangement, and it seems, certainly seems to be the arrangement on this one, from what I can see from the filings with the state, typically two standalone LLCs, special purpose limited liability corporations involved at a minimum. One of them owns the property, the real estate, and one of them is the operator. Okay? And it's also typical, and I think it's true of Mr. Palumbo's other projects, that oftentimes, the real estate, the property is mortgaged. So there may be a lender that has a first lien on this property. Our town, our solicitor, Sean, talked about layers and layers of security. I don't think that's probably a layer at all. I believe that it's entirely possible the property will be mortgaged to raise money to help finance the project. And the town at best would be a second lien running after whatever's left. For the operator, 30 years from now, the assets of the project are going to consist of 30-year-old solar panels and 30-year-old transformers. And, you know, this is a standalone LLC. It has no other corporate existence and it has no other assets. So good luck with that, chasing after the LLC that has no assets to pay you back on anything you can't make up from your decommissioning reserve. So those are my comments. I think the risk in this is huge. I think if you multiply it times dozens of projects around town, there is, there is a disaster scenario for the town. I don't have a crystal ball, but everything I gave you in those two binders suggests that regulators around the world are saying absolutely not to putting these things in landfills. Any small market that exists now for repurposed panels to be sold for salvage value, I think it's a fair bet is rapidly diminishing and certainly disappearing as this volume of used panels comes on board. Good citizens are going to need to recycle their panels. If you put them in landfills, as the research suggests, first of all, they won't tolerate it. There's no room for it. But there, I also gave you scientific studies that said landfills create precisely the conditions that begin to allow the panels to decay and these toxic materials to leach out, which is one of the reasons why these governments are not tolerating it anymore. So I hope that the discussion is not closed with this figure. I hope that these questions will be put to the engineer. I want him to certify that he believes that there's, that at the very least, that it's improbable that recycling will be required or something like, something stronger. Because if these things have to be recycled, this document provided to you by the developer says, based on his own numbers, that cost is going to be over a million dollars. And you're all ready to approve a reserve for a fraction of that. And as a taxpayer, I think that's a very, very dangerous road to go down, especially if we're going to do that for every project in the future. Thanks for your attention. I appreciate having the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Very good, Eric. Thank you. Hey, so let's stop right here. Steve, are you still on the line?
Oh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. So did you hear the questions from Mr. Bibler? A question specifically with regards to the decommission?
Yes.
So.
I am. And the one document that he referred to, I am familiar with, you know, the one that he refers to the recycling cost is about 70 cents per pound. And these panels do weigh about, I believe, 53 pounds each. Now, there's no doubt that the life of a panel is realistically 30, if not 40 years. So we're talking a 25-year timeframe. So there's no doubt that at the end of 25 years, these panels, and we assumed only half of them, will have a life ahead of them. The unknown that I've stated is that the value of the panels 25 years from now is going to depend upon the increased technology and efficiency that occurs over the next 25 years. And what I mean by that is, if 25 years from now, solar panels can be manufactured to produce a much higher energy for a lower cost, then the value of these panels will be reduced. And the research that we found, and this is from talking to, you know, different recycling companies, is that the range of value of a used panel varies from, let's see, 10 to, $10 to $50 each. So we, again, we are looking out for the town, and our goal is to be fair. We utilize the value of only $15 for the future value of the panels. And again, we assumed only 50% will be resold. Will that occur? I believe the statement that I actually underlined on page two of my memo, and as an engineer, we usually don't use the word speculative. As an engineer, we tend to certify a design. We certify a statement. But I did have to state in writing that determining salvage value for materials 25 years in the future is speculative and cannot be certified. So I can certify to that statement. But the value of aluminum, glass, copper, and cable and steel 25 years from now, no one can really, really do that. Because I've researched, we've researched the value of each of those items over the past, you know, 10 to 25 years, and the ranges vary significantly. Some of the products have decreased in value, others have gone up as you would normally expect. So he did ask, do I believe that it's possible that none of the panels will be resold in the future? Knowing that used panels have a value, I do not believe that none of the panels can be resold. And I believe Mr. Bibler was correct, that the applicant in their analysis assumed that two thirds would be resold. I thought, I did feel that two thirds was optimistic. We reduced it down to 50%. Will the actual be 25%? You know, we can't say. But again, we tried to offset any unknowns by using a lower value per panel. And when it comes to say that recycling doesn't pay for itself, it's really going to depend upon the value of the raw materials in the future. We do believe that in the future, there will be a much larger quantity and volume of panels to be recycled. So the benefit is that they'll, we anticipate there'll be more competition. There'll be more recyclers. There'll be more, more demand to recycle. In the sense that it could theoretically, everyone will be more efficient recycling. There'll be more competition. And there is a potential that recycling may actually begin generating a profit. So, so Chairman, I cannot certify with 25 years in the future holes. I wish I could. But there is an uncertainty. But we do believe that the assumptions we made are reasonable based upon the history.
Very good, Steve. Thank you very much. I know it's a tough issue to address, but you did a great job. Okay, moving on.
No other comments from the public?
No other comments. Okay, interesting. Very good. So let's stand back, take a deep breath.
We just, we just got one hand. Last four digits, 7233, please state your name for the record.
Yes, this is Tammy Jocelyn.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you to the planning board members to, for trying to keep the existing vegetation along Maxon Hill Road. I was at the meeting that was, the last meeting that was in person. And I think it was suggested that the people reach out to the abudders to see if they would like to walk along the property to, to take a look at the, you know, what their plans were, to talk to them. And I never received a letter or any kind of notification. And I was wondering if that was still going to happen.
So, thank you for the question. So just to be clear, you were under the impression that there might be a site walk, perhaps?
Yeah, I think actually that was, it was you, Al, that said that was a good idea for, and I don't know if it was who it was that should reach out to the abudders.
Well, well, that's always a wonderful idea. I'm thinking that if you didn't get notice, it probably didn't happen. The, given the unusual circumstances that we find ourselves in, the opportunity to view the site was extended to the planning board members only. And as a result, none of the, there was no subsequent contact with the abutting property owners. That's probably more a function of the fact that we couldn't really hold a site meeting the way we have typically in the past, only because of the circumstances that we find ourselves in. So certainly my apologies if you thought it was going to happen and it didn't happen. That's not to say that it can't happen in the future. I would, I'm going to, going to point that to the applicant and say, this sounds like an opportunity for you to reach out to the abutting property owners, should you be so inclined to share the details of your project with them.
Yeah. Mr. Dario, this is Ralph Palumbo. That would be fine. We did send out certified letters to abudders. We did have a number of abudders call us and ask us questions for clarification. And we answered them. No one requested to have a site walk. But certainly, for this abutter, if I can have the name and phone number, I could have someone who'd ever call, make an appropriate visit. And I say appropriate, you know, with COVID, I think we can have an appropriate visit, this applicant would like. So may I have the name and the phone number, please?
Sure. It's Tammy Jocelyn, J O S L I N. And it's 401-741-7233. We did receive the certified letters, but it was just, I believe it was just notifying us of the meetings. I didn't realize we could call and request information.
That's fine. We have plenty of time to do that. And so I will have Lindsay McGovern from my office, she'll contact you. And we'll set something up, okay?
Okay, that'd be great. I was the one that stated that we are sort of situated above the property. So, you know, I can look out over, I can see the restaurant facility and I can see across 95 and down into Connecticut. So any consideration for keeping the existing vegetation or building the berm and making the, any kind of plantings higher to, you know, appease the view would be great.
Okay. So we'll come in, we'll contact you, talk to you, and we'll get John Carter involved, who's a landscape architect, okay?
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both for taking care of that. I appreciate it.
We have another comment from a member of the public. I'm going to state the last four digits and then please state your name for the record, 5761.
Hello, Carol DeRozers, Pleasant View Drive. Just listening to the prior comment. I have a question. Reading the solar ordinance, it mentions that if the project is going to require six or more months of construction, that the applicant would be providing formal written notice by mail to all the abudders and residents within 500 feet of the project. And I'm wondering if that's what was adhered to here versus the typical 250 feet. That's all.
Thanks. Good question. I don't have the answer, but it sounds like someone might.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Moses. That notice was sent at 500 feet. We did it multiple times.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else out there? None. Okay, as I was saying, time to step back, take a deep breath. 950. Planning board members, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from the public, you've had an opportunity to ask your own questions. What is your pleasure moving forward?
Al, it's Keith Linder. I know it's late, but Joe actually gave me a good reminder of my question I had earlier about the blasting and why they were asking that had it moved. Does that mean that they are planning on blasting? And I'd want some more information about what that might entail.
Keith, this is Jim Lamphier, town planner. I would suggest that Joe Moreau is correct, that whether it's explicitly stated as a condition or not, the ordinance would apply and then not to blast out there, period. So.
Very good. Thank you.
And to add to that, Keith, I would be taking the position that, at Jim's advice, that be added back into the, any kind of motion that we construct as a condition.
Great. Yeah, I support that. Thank you.
So once again, planning board members, given the, given where we are on the clock, what would you like to do at this point? Do you want to enter into constructing a motion? Do you want to do something else? Let me know.
This is Carolyn. I don't believe there's enough time this evening to construct the agreement with the comments that I know I have on it, let alone what other people might be interested in discussing. discussing.
Okay. There's one voice. Anyone else?
Yeah. Excuse me. This is Ron. This being a blue collar community, members of the planning board, members of the public that are listening in, and anyone else involved, most of these people have jobs that they have to get to. And it doesn't look like we can resolve this in any sort of a timeframe that's going to be equitable to get this all done this evening. So I would say that we should probably wind it up tonight.
I'm sorry. That was a comment to... Let's have that again, Ron. What was your idea?
That it looks like we're not going to be able to bring this to a conclusion tonight, that we should move on.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're a town planner. I would, in an effort to, you know, expedite something for next time we come back with this application, is there any guidance or advice that the planning board would have to the applicant as to what they're expected to come back with at the next meeting? For example, you want changes made to the landscape plan for the next meeting? Or, I'd just like to know where we're going to pick up at the next meeting? We're just going to start going into conditions or what?
Yes. That's a great question, Jim. So the very next thing that I would have done, if our timing was a little bit different, is I would have concluded that we've heard all the testimony, we have a set of plans in front of us that, you know, might need some tweaking or not, but I'm ready to get into the specific conditions of a motion. So that's where I would be coming from. I'm not really sure I need the applicant to come back with a set of revised plans next time. Instead, there's going to be, in my mind, there's going to be a series of conditions. And those conditions are the things that are going to drive any subsequent revision to the plan. So I would be thinking that when the applicant comes in for their final plan and Jim's approval, then they would need to incorporate the language of the conditions. That would be my thinking.
Okay. I'd just like to mention that I think we will, we'll need to get an extension from the applicant to some date certain. And, you know, at the risk of bringing up a topic here that I'm not crazy about bringing up, would the board, do you think we should have a special meeting so we can wrap this project up? Or do you want to take a shot in putting it on the next regular meeting with probably a good number of other applications as well? So whatever your pleasure is, we can... I guess we'll be starting off with this at the September meeting anyway. So I think they'll, I think we can rest assured that we can probably finish this up in a regular meeting. If we don't get to some other things, we don't get to them.
And as an, the outlier here for me is that we don't have any contributions from the fire marshal. So if we can get a commitment from the fire marshal for a special meeting in two weeks, or if they can have that commitment for September, I'd feel comfortable with that.
Can I comment on the fire marshal? This is Dave Russo with Dupree. We did meet with the fire marshal. The fire marshal talked to Jim Lanfair. So we did consult with the fire marshal. He gave an early look at the plans. We're required by the ordinance to go back to them prior to the final approval. So we have coordinated with them. The fire department doesn't want to review the plans until the planning board signs off on them, for good reason, because of things such as the fence change. So if we did have the fire department review it a few weeks ago, the fence being changed would have had to get rereviewed. So I think the fire department likes to wait until it's approved for that final approval, and we're required to get an approval from fire before final, before the project bill from them.
So Dave, thanks for that clarification. I'm sure you can appreciate that that puts us like, you know, with the chicken and the egg scenario. We're looking for some kind of favorable wave from the fire marshal before we offer our formal opinion. It sounds like that's not going to be forthcoming until we issue the approval for him. So, you know, how do you suggest we resolve this?
I mean, the fire marshal talked to the town planner. I mean, we're just going, it's also based on the ordinance. We can see if they'll give us a preliminary letter, but, I mean, we're not, this is going off your ordinance.
I understand.
In the fire marshal, in the fire marshal's process.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Colombo. I did speak to the fire marshal, and he didn't have any sweeping objections to, he did look at some preliminary plans, and, you know, he commented on the fence, you know, the stockade fence, and he says, it's okay with him as long as we repair it. Obviously, we're moving in a different direction. So, you know, I'll call him this week and see what I can do to advance a more solid reaction for the board to consider. So I clearly understand where you're coming from, and I'll do my best with the, with the fire marshal.
I certainly appreciate your follow-up on that. And again, I'm not looking to pin the fire marshal down to an approval of a preliminary document, but even if it's just, I forget the terms you just used, even if it's just a preliminary assessment that he has no dramatic objections to what's being proposed, that would go a long way in my mind.
Yeah. I got it. And, you know, my past experience in your town and others is that, you know, that our approval with the planning board will be conditioned on the fire marshal's approval. You know, so I get, you know, there is a chicken and egg issue here. I'll manage it and come back with something that I'm sure will be logical before the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So just, Mr. Chairman, as for a special meeting, I take heart to the comment that everyone's blue collar, we all work, we've got to get up early in the morning. It's not necessary, we have the patience to wait until the next meeting. I feel like this board has really put earnest effort and work and working with us, so I don't, I don't see like I have to push. You know, I think there's a lot of good faith going on here, so the next scheduled meeting is where first on the agenda. I assume that the public comment is closed, so we can get right down to the conditions, is the way I'm hearing it. But that would all work well for us.
Okay. Well, we certainly appreciate that kind of latitude. So after hearing that, I, I'm delighted that we don't have to attend another special meeting, given our schedules. So if we can agree to continue this to the next regular meeting, I would be asking for a verbal from the applicant or their representative to get us an extension to... Now, let me just, let me offer just a word of caution here, is I thought about this this evening, and I think I've expressed this to Ron. The applicant has been forthcoming with extensions, and we appreciate that. The applicant has also been doling the extensions out like plasma. So we've got to do a little bit better than that, because the applicant has to realize that in the event that something happens where we cannot attend, or we can't make the next meeting, there's a tropical storm brewing, there's a hurricane, there's who knows what. This project is not going to get approved by default, not on my watch. So I would respectfully request an extension that exceeds the date of the next regular meeting. You can make it exceed it by a couple of days, that's perfectly okay, but not an extension to the next regular meeting. I hope we're on the same page.
We are on the same page. That's perfectly reasonable, and hurricane is a good example, so I get it.
Care to pick a date? Give us, pick something that's comfortable for you. I don't care, as long as it exceeds the next regular meeting.
Our next regular meeting is going to be on September 2nd, just for informational purposes.
This is Tom Moses. Ralph, how about September 9th, a week?
Okay. That seems like a good, flexible accommodation, Tom. I agree with that.
Yep.
I'm on board with that. Planning board members, we okay with this thinking?
Yes. I have one request, Mr. Chairman. Just, it's a question. Is, is public comment closed?
Well, technically, this is a development plan review application. It's not technically a public hearing. So my, my personal philosophy is I entertain public comment on all applications, whether it's allowed by the ordinance or not. Simply my personal take on it. But that said, the public has had their opportunity. We've come to the point where there were no more hands raised, so in my opinion, public comment has run its course.
Okay. So my second request...
Question or not?
It does. Yeah, that was clear and concise. My second question with the next meeting, will we be first on the agenda?
I leave that in Mr. Lee's hands.
I'll have to see. You know, there could be, normally we have public hearings first on the agenda. So in the event that something like that occurs, we have to put that first. So we try to get you, I'll try to get you up front as far, as far up front as I can so we can get rid of this. That's my hope.
Okay. I will take you at your word that you'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. DiOrio, one last thing.
Of course.
The blasting, I want to take that off the table, so we can agree to not blast, okay?
Okay. We appreciate that. All right. So this has been a very productive meeting, in my opinion. I'd like to suggest, or I will entertain a motion to continue the development plan review for this project to the, our next scheduled meeting, which is September 2nd.
No, to the date, September 9th.
The meeting is September 2nd. The extension has been granted to September 9th. I stand corrected. I'll entertain such a motion.
I'd like to make that motion. Do we extend this to September 2nd with the possibility to go to September 9th, provided there's extenuating circumstances of weather or whatever?
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Keith Lindelof, second motion.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
This is Carolyn. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I just wanted to elaborate on my comments regarding the fire marshal. What I'm really more concerned about is knowing that there's going to be access for maintenance and emergency vehicles. So if we can't get the fire marshal to wave at us, that's actually the concern that I'd like to look at. I'll stop there, and I'll say my vote is yes on continuing on September 2nd with the extension to September 9th. Thank you.
Okay. So DiOrio, yes? Has everybody weighed in?
No. Not even close.
Okay. Let's hear a bunch of yeses.
Prologos, yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Emily, you out there?
Go ahead, Emily.
Emily, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Emily, yes. Sorry.
Okay. Done deal. Thank you very much.
So we're technically past...
Thank you.
...PM. That clock is a little bit slow.
Got it.
So would we like to extend the meeting to attempt to get to the final item on the agenda?
Planning board members, take a look at your next agenda item, which is new business. It's a pre-application for a four-lot minor subdivision. Tell me if you're prepared to extend the, the meeting for a period of time. Let's make it a period of time certain, if you're so inclined, to, to hear this application, or does it roll to the next agenda? I want to caution that you've heard Jim's concerns about the next agenda already, so I will lead off and say personally, I'm okay with a minor revision to our deadline this evening, provided that this application can be heard succinctly.
Jamie, I'm just going to...
Do we need...
Star nine.
Do we need 30 minutes? Can we, that time certain, or do we need 20? This is Carolyn. I'm, I'm on board, but I want to lock in that time.
Oh, I can let the...
And I don't necessarily fear that this applicant has hung in there so long, so I'd like to give them some...
I understand. I'm going to recommend 30 minutes. Not that the applicant can take 30 minutes, but we have one other agenda item to clear. So that would be my recommendation.
I'm fine with that.
I would agree to that. I'm sorry, Keith, we both spoke at the same time. I would agree to the 30 minutes.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ron.
All right. So look, and it sounds like we have a consensus. So can I just have a motion to make this formal, that we extend our deadline for 30 minutes, and that would be until, I have 10:07, so let's make it 10:37.
I make a motion, we extend the meeting till 10:37?
I have a motion.
Carolyn, second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? DiOrio, yes?
Prologos, yes.
Light, yes.
Shumshini, yes.
All good? Okay. Next item on the agenda, and we certainly appreciate your, your folks hanging in with us. It's been a long evening. Under new business, a pre-application for a lot minor subdivision, Rocky Hill Compound, Platte 17, Lot 100, Spring Street, Christine Austin, and CCC LLC applicant. Applicant or their representative present?
Go ahead, Christine.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. I see Jamie is here as well.
Yes, I'm here. Jamie, sorry.
I'm going to like to do just a short presentation to introduce the project.
Christine, you want me to go?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jamie. Can you, can you do that? That'd be great.
Yeah. So we're just, we're looking to actually take this property, I believe it's roughly 30 acres. And we're not trying to maximize it or anything, but we are looking to get four, four lots out of it, four residential lots, with a fairly minimal private road that will be gravel. We're not looking to do anything, you know, pervious or impervious or anything crazy like that. We're looking to do a residential compound with about 10 acres of open space that the four lots will actually have joint ownership in. And really, we're just looking to come before the town with, I mean, we've gone a little bit probably beyond what you typically see for a concept, but we just wanted to, you know, have the town weigh in, so we can keep our, our path through the pre-app and, you know, through minor development on the least, definitely least resistance. So just wanted to have everybody have a chance to have their eyes on it, and, you know, I know one of Jim's comments was that we're actually, I think on my plan, I had five proposed lots, but it's actually only four. And I just wanted to make sure that we're going through the correct path as we're going, so that we're not, you know, stopped by anything, you know, such as, you know, having to go to major or something like that. We do have an engineer on board who is also looking at it, and there's going to be some, you know, minor revisions to this, but this is kind of our general concept.
Very good, Jamie. Thank you. Appreciate the summary. So, and I certainly appreciate your taking the opportunity to come before us at a pre-application stage. It seems to be a fairly simplistic project, but nonetheless, it's always nice to have an opportunity to review the project at an early stage. So I'll lead off. I only had a couple of thoughts for your consideration.
Okay.
Most, most poignantly, the issue of your road terminus. So you have, you have a rather unusual end to your proposed road. And while the residential compound ordinance is by its very nature a little bit relaxed, we still need to ensure that we can turn an emergency vehicle around at the end of this roadway. So I would only add... I would only ask-
Actually, Jim, go ahead.
I would only ask that prior to your finalization of the design, you've run this by the fire marshal and all the other emergency folks in town to make sure that they're comfortable with this layout. My experience is typically pulling into driveway or backing into a turnaround is not what we do with emergency vehicles. So I just throw that out there, it was the first thing that I saw that-
Absolutely.
Gave me a little bit of concern. If you could just-
Jim, I can speak to that. I can speak to that. If I may, I actually just met with Chief Lee yesterday, and the engineer did design a hammerhead for emergency vehicles, and I have, I got a letter from the chief yesterday saying that they're, they're absolutely fine with it. So that's on my list to forward that to you, I just picked it up yesterday.
So, so thank you.
So they've reviewed all the plans, and the chief gave me a letter saying that preliminary, you know, for a preliminary plan, they accept that hammerhead for emergency turnaround, and, and they're fine moving forward. Obviously, they would have to do a final approval of, of final plans, but I do have that approval from the chief.
Okay, and so, thank you for that. And so when you say hammerhead, are you referring to the configuration that's currently shown on the plan?
Uh, yeah, yep, there's a hammerhead turnaround, or rather to, I guess, say back into it. Jamie knows more about that than me.
Yeah. If I have a chance to weigh in, if I have a chance to weigh in, Al. Yeah, so we actually did present this to the, the chief and everything, these plans that you have in front of you, and he, he looked at them and he, he said they look good. And I believe we have a letter and everything of approval for it, so.
Okay, that's good.
They had a couple different things they were willing to accept, so.
Yep, got it. And so the other, only, the only other issue was with regards to your open space. So I see you have a 30-foot access to the open space, that's wonderful.
Yep.
Look incredibly usable to me. So the ordinance gives the planning board authority, if you will, over the use of the open space. So I come to, I say, given the fact that the open space appears to be accessible only by crossing some steep terrain in a wetland, what do you plan to do with that open space?
Well, right now, it's actually, when you go onto a property and you do get up there, it actually levels off really nicely up there, and it's really pretty clear. I've had a few different people up there to kind of just assess the, where you cross the wetlands, is there a pre-existing old culvert type thing where, because they've, there's an old logging road that goes up there, so that 30-foot access that goes up there has been Thompson's Lumber, and I believe another lumber company have gone back there and, and logged that property two or three times before I purchased it. So they do have kind of a just, you know, old culvert type thing over that wetland. It's a very small stream where you cross over. So that's something we have to look at with excavation to kind of flatten, flatten those hills a little bit so that it is more accessible, which we've been working on with excavation and the engineer. And then also, you know, we'll obviously have to get somebody involved with wetlands and to see exactly what we need to do to cross over that wetland safely and, and securely, but that'll be in our plan moving forward.
So I would like to recommend this.
Can I also speak to that, Al?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, there is, so yeah, so the plan back there, our intention is to make it recreational open space. It's for the use of all the homeowners to, you know, enjoy freely, not to mow it down or anything like that, keep it kind of in its natural state. It's just for recreation, it's kind of a beautiful natural area on the landscape, nobody wants to mow it down or do anything crazy with it. And there is actually already access across, there is an old logging path that I do show on the plan that does continue through the 30-foot easement, and that's our access to that. So there's really no intentions to develop it further than that, really, other than, you know, to enjoy the, the property for all homeowners since, you know, it's just beautiful piece of area, you know, we can all enjoy.
So Jamie, perhaps I'm just missing it, but I don't see this logging road on your plan. That would have made a world-
There's a black bold, there's a black bold line that says approximate path, that's about as far as it goes, is my description of it, but I can show in more detail if we need to show that. It is there, it's existing, so that's what we're trying to, we're trying to actually keep that easement on that space because it's already there.
There we go. So if you could elaborate on that and subsequent plans, that's pretty important to the planning board because clearly a virgin crossing would constitute a, you know, quite a burden for you to get to that open space, but if you're-
It's already a path.
If you already have a-
Yeah, it's actually an old logging road, for sure.
You already have a mechanism, then that's going to make life a lot easier. And those were my only two comments.
Okay.
So, planning board members, other thoughts or comments?
Al, thanks for your guidance. It's Keith here, this project looks pretty straightforward to me, so I'd be in favor.
This, this is Carolyn, I, I just want some clarification. So there's no future development for anything in that open space? It's going to be retained for the people in the compound and, and the neighbors, right?
Yeah, correct. Hiking trails, there's some water down there, um, yeah, just, just basically a, a nature area for families to go, and there's a lot of really great hiking and stuff back there. So no, there's no development, no deforestation, no, nothing, nothing's getting touched back there except cleaning up that path a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's lovely.
Yep.
Jim, you had something to add?
Yeah, this is Jim Lampfia, the town planner. In my memo to the planning board, I mentioned that this private right-of-way just seems to deadhead, uh, dead-end, I should say, without any kind of a cul-de-sac at the end of it. And, and where it dead-ends, then you have that 30-foot wide access path, and the two driveways to the two homes, they, they first go into the 30-foot wide access path, and they kind of merge together, almost like a shared driveway. And-
Right.
I just think that that end, that end of the private drive could be designed a little bit more efficiently, such that we have a separate-
Okay.
Um, that's, that's my comment on, on the proposal here, but.
Okay.
Sure. And we, and we, and this is Jamie, and we do have an engineer that's actually reviewing this whole thing. This is just, you know, this is kind of a down and dirty, I wanted to get something in front of you guys, but it is being further reviewed by the engineer, and, you know, we'll have something, you know, more official for you next time.
Okay, fine. I just want to say, you know, it's all well and good to have a fire marshal take a look at a plan, but they're not subdivision designers either, okay? So we, we have to come up with something here that the planning board is, is pleased with, and something that, something that fits our residential compound ordinance in terms of private drives. And then once that is put on a piece of paper, then we can hear what the fire marshal says about that, but.
Right.
Otherwise, the fire marshal's designing our subdivisions for us, so.
Right, and I'm not asking him to design it, but, you know, if in the end, he can get access up there, he can get his truck up, he can get it out, that's the reason for having that kind of a turnaround for us, right? Otherwise, I mean, us as individuals in those homes, we can drive into our driveway and turn around if we need to, as long as those guys have access and they can put out a fire and get their trucks turned around, it really shouldn't be any more of an issue than that, right?
Right.
Well, not-
And that kind of was-
That's why we have subdivision standards, right?
Right.
It's not all about the fire marshal's back, backing trucks down.
Sure.
Right, right. And we did actually have them come out and look at the property, just, you know, briefly, and it's been a while, but he did say that basically what his theory was, was that in the case of a fire, they're not backing up, they're, they're pulling forward, they're pulling forward and they're pulling right up to the home to put out the fire. So the major concern is that when the fire is over, that they can, you know, and that also that there's enough room to get all the vehicles up there, and between the two driveways and the 30-foot right-of-way, there's plenty of room for enough emergency vehicles to get up there. And he was completely satisfied with the hammerhead design for them to be able to back out safely and, and get down that, that hill right there.
So in summary-
We're just trying to avoid the cul-de-sac because it's going to take up a lot more room, it's a lot more excavation, it's a lot more trees being cut down, and we're just trying to really keep it as natural as possible, our goal.
I understand. So in summary, I would be suggesting that you work with the planner to make sure that you've got a piece of geometry here that satisfies our regulation and hopefully satisfies your objectives as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other planning board members want to weigh in on this one? Okay, hearing none. It's a pre-application meeting, there's no vote taken at a pre-application. I, I hope that we've given you a little bit of directive. It sounds like the consensus is that you've got a viable project here with perhaps a couple of revisions, and we look forward to seeing you at your next commission.
Excellent, and thank you, we really appreciate you staying late to hear this and get this moving forward.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, planning board members, last item. We have five minutes. Carolyn, I apologize. So although not published on the agenda that I had, it was published on an agenda that Jim has, so Carolyn, I wanted to assure you that we did take this seriously. The next agenda item is discuss possible scheduling of an agenda item at either a future special planning board meeting or future regular planning board meeting regarding discussion of reforestation issues requested by you.
Hi guys, thank you, thank you. I'm just gonna give you five minutes. For the board that doesn't know, I coordinated a draft forestation agreement. It's incentive for the town as an organization, a business, and it's an incentive for developers, and it's not limited to solo projects, but it's a forestation agreement that is designed to protect and enhance our rural community. And I'd like to be able to have that document put in front of the team before we move forward to actually have the discussion. My brain's fried, I don't know about anybody else.
All right, so Carolyn, let me just be real candid. So tell me how you think your idea would actually be implemented? I'm not looking for details, keep it high altitude. If we, if we decided to discuss reforestation, how do you see it actually working on a project?
Well, I think it has to be addressed at the town council level. I think what I'd like to get some direction from the planning board, but ultimately, it should evolve into an ordinance, a forestation ordinance for our, our community. But in, in, in the short term, this draft agreement that I put together lends some insight into some of the work that we have going before us. Maybe there are some ideas or some, there's some direction in that draft agreement that we can apply to the projects that come before us in the future.
So let me, let me try and be more specific. So let's take an example of an applicant who's actually come before us and offered a reforestation program, that, that being 310 Main Street. I don't think I'm out of order talking about this. So here's a, here's a project, doesn't really matter that it's a solo project, could be anything at all, and the project has a certain lifespan. And after this lifespan, the applicant is suggesting that they are going to dismantle their project and replant it with a certain vegetation program. Now, I think I have maintained right from the very beginning that I think that is the most ludicrous idea that I have ever heard, because we have here a piece of commercial property, we don't have a lot of that in town to begin with, a piece of commercial property near one of our interstate exits, that someone thinks we're going to replant with vegetation 25 years from now. Well, listen, I'm not going to be around in 25 years in all likelihood, but I would be really surprised if Hopkinton was planting its commercial property. I would be really surprised at that. So I guess what I'm getting at is, how do you see reforestation on commercial projects being an idea that we should be thinking about? I'm not, I don't get it. Explain it to me.
Okay, so we've had some projects actually be approved under conditions that they revert back to residential land. I, I agree with you on a commercial piece of property and everything that has been converted to commercial. There's no financial incentive to do anything else but leave it as commercial land. But 25 or 30 years from now, we don't know what the shape of the community is going to be in either. So assuming that there have been conditions set that properties would convert back to the residential RFR 80, and the reforestation is going to proceed according to the agreements that we have in place, this forestation agreement gives the town some leverage to actually make sure it's done properly. And for instance, we talked earlier about the plantings and the success of the growth rate, and how long is it going to take, et cetera. And I, I think some of what's missing in what we're doing is how that's going to be managed. And the forestation agreement that I am hoping we can get to discuss actually talks about what happens in one year, what happens in two years, when that forestation is done. For instance, I'd like to see some of the concepts in this agreement applied to the frontier road project that we're managing right now. For instance, yeah, we agree that we're going to put up the berm, we agree that we're going to put trees on top of the berm, a year from now or two years from now, when those trees don't survive, what mechanisms do we have? We have none right now, except to knock on a door, and, and I, I think there's an awareness in the planning department that the responsible parties don't always pick up the phone when there's an issue that needs to be tended to on an existing operating site. You know, and we're short on resources. This also gives us financial resources to actually work the program, because right now, there, there are no penalties, there's, there's no incentive for a developer to follow From an LLC perspective, there really is no incentive for them to follow through. If the, the project goes live in November, and, and December the project is sold, how do we follow that? And how do we enforce our concerns regarding the buffering, the views of the residents, et cetera? So yeah, assuming 25 years from now, a commercial piece of property is going to be reverted back to its RFR 80, I'd like to see some kind of security in place that's going to favor the community.
I, I'm, I'm certainly okay with pursuing any idea that a planning board member brings forth. So if you want to give this the light of day, I will do everything I can to facilitate it. I will be, I will admit that I am somewhat skeptical of how the whole thing works, but I guess you're going to elaborate on that for me. So other planning board members, the whole idea was to talk about getting this on a subsequent planning board meeting for further discussion. Are we okay with that? Do we want to do that? What, what's your pleasure?
Jim Lampfia, town planner, I, I just want to ask a question. I, I thought I heard Carolyn say that she wanted to get her draft document to the planning board members in advance of the meeting at which we're going to discuss this. So I guess, I just want to find out, Carolyn, what you're, what you want us to do? Want us just to distribute the draft document to the planning board members, and then have them read it, reflect on it, and maybe bring this back for possible agenda placement at some point in time down the road? Or do you want to set, do you want to set a meeting date to discuss this tonight?
I suppose we should probably ask Sean about how this should be conducted. Sean, do you have anything to add? I'll take that as a no then.
Sean, are you still there?
Sorry, I was, I was on mute.
Sorry, I was, I was on mute talking to myself.
Uh, well, welcome back, yes.
So either, uh, approach that Jim just laid out, uh, could work. You could simply just schedule a, a future meeting, and if Carolyn wished to provide documentation prior to that meeting, she could. If you wanted to distribute, uh, the information, uh, to the planning board, and the planning board can individually, individual members can digest it themselves, uh, and then come back at some future date to possibly schedule a meeting, you could do that as well.
Alright, good. Sean. Carolyn, why don't we leave this up to you? What, what, what would be your preferred travel?
I would like to see this, um, I would like to see this put on an agenda. I would like the, the draft to go before the planning board members in advance of that. I'd like it just to be food for thought for them to ponder it, so that when we eventually do get to have a formal discussion about this, uh, we'll be able to be a little more productive because, uh, there's obviously going to be some skepticism about the approach. Um, the, this is an approach that's being taken in a lot of other communities around the country. I, I'd like people just to ponder the whole philosophy and let's get together and decide if it's something that we want to pursue further. And if it's no, then it's no. But I, I just want that thought process there, so we're not, uh, wasting anybody's time.
I understand. Okay, so how about this then? In summary, can we distribute your draft to the planning board members in advance? And then put this on an agenda for some type of initial discussion? Something tells me, as I'm looking across the table at Jim, something tells me that giving this adequate time might require, uh, like a workshop environment. Instead of a regular meeting where, as we are tonight, we're pushed right up against the limits of our endurance. Uh, what do you think about that idea?
I, I like the workshop environment. I, I think that would be the more appropriate avenue to take.
Okay, so let's get the document out to the planning board members. And then we can maybe put it on as an agenda item with the idea that maybe we even set a workshop date at some point in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
So do you want to put it on like the next, the next planning board agenda in order to set a date for a workshop? Or do you want to call some workshop dates now? Are we looking, are we looking for the board to look at this maybe for a month or two before they, before they're ready for a workshop? Or what's, what's your timeframe Carolyn?
Um, so, so how about we distribute the document to the board in advance? At the next meeting, we have the opportunity for the board to chime in and, and just advise us if they want to follow through with the workshop or not.
Oh, that's great Carolyn. That's a, that's a great plan. We'll, we'll get the, we'll get the document out, uh, tomorrow to the, uh, board members. They can begin-
Okay, thanks.
Begin looking at it.
And we can have it as an agenda item, you know?
Next, next, September 2nd.
Sure, initial discussion, see where we go from there.
Yep.
Carolyn, how's that sound?
Sounds brilliant. We're so smart.
Deb would like to weigh in. Go ahead Deb.
Yeah, just, just a quickie. Um, if we go to a workshop format, I think the Conservation Commission would like to be involved as well.
Of course.
That's a great recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, everybody. Time to go, time to go to bed.
Almost. So, uh, let's see, let me just, uh, go through the rest of the agenda. We're pretty close here. Uh, solicitors report?
There is none.
Planners report?
None.
Correspondents and updates, none. Public forum?
Nothing.
Dead space. No problem. Date of the next regular meeting is September 2nd. If there's nothing else to properly come before us, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, sir.
You have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Deorio, yes.
Prologis, yes.
Lindelof, yes.
Light, yes.
Shumshini, yes.
Very good. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Good night John boys.
Night.